We will call this meeting to order at this time. We will ask Reverend Sheila McCoy, Pastor of God's Manor Ministries, if she will come forward at this time and lead us with the invocation. And we also have Kaden Green, if you can lead us in the pledge after the prayer. So as soon as Pastor finishes giving us the invocation, you can lead us in the pledge. Okay? Everyone please stand at this time.
All heart reverends, please. Holy Father, in Jesus' name, we thank you for our country and its government. We hold up before you men and women who are in position of authority, particularly tonight, our City Commission. We ask you to please be with them in their deliberations and help them to be wise in the decisions made for the good of all those who have placed their trust and confidence in their leadership. We believe that skillful and godly wisdom have entered into their hearts. We also ask that you put people in their paths to give God the counsel and that they do what is right in your sight. Your word declares, blessed is the nation whose God is the Lord. Turn our hearts back to you in all we do. Amen.
Amen. Kaden?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great job.
Great job, Kaden. Thank you Pastor. Roll call please.
Mayor, Terrell Hill.
Here.
Vice Mayor, Marion Lawson Brown. Commissioner Rufus Borum.
Present.
Commissioner Dustin Campbell.
Present.
Commissioner Tammy McCaskill.
Here.
All members are present and accounted for, and you have a forum.
Thank you. Has everyone had an opportunity to review the minutes?
Motion to approve.
It's motioned to approve by Commissioner Borum, second by Commissioner Campbell. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries unanimously. Moving on to item one of the agenda. We will move item A, which is the resolution supporting Northeast Florida Regional Council. We'll revisit it if Mr. Teepel comes. A resolution to the City Commission of the City of Palacka, Florida, supporting the mission of Northeast Florida Regional Council and its myriad programs, projects, initiatives that inure to the mutual advantage of each unit of local government in the region, affirming the City of Palacka's encouragement of universal engagement. Whereas the Northeast Florida Regional Council was formed on February 14th, 1977 through and a local agreement between Baker, Clay, Duval, Flagler, Nassau, Putnam, and St. John's Counties. And whereas the declared purpose of the Northeast Florida Regional Planning Council Act, section 186.501 of Florida statutes, is to establish a common system of regional planning councils for area-wide coordination and related cooperative activities of federal, state, and local governments, and ensure a broad-based regional organization that can provide a truly regional perspective, enhancing the ability of local governments to resolve issues and problems transcending their individual boundaries. And whereas the Northeast Florida Regional Council is a multipurpose regional governmental entity with policy responsibility in areas of affordable housing, economic development, emergency preparedness, energy, regional health, natural resources, and regional transportation. And whereas Northeast Florida Regional Council has a contingency provide value-added programs, projects, and initiatives that by the virtue of their organizational structure, board leadership, and dedicated staff, they are uniquely positioned to undertake on behalf of its local government and region as a whole. And whereas Northeast Florida Regional Council recognizing the need for expanding services for citizens of Northeast Florida, create the Northeast Florida Healthy Start Coalition, the Private Industry Coalition, the Regional Leadership Academy, the Business Development Corporation, the Private Industry Council, now a career source of Northeast Florida, the Wildlife Rescue Coalition, the Northeast Florida Healthcare Coalition, the Northeast Florida Regional Community Institute, the Local Emergency Planning Committee, and many others that have addressed the needs of all the member governments. And whereas it is our mission of the Northeast Florida Regional Council to celebrate the unique asset of Northeast Florida and to engage its people, businesses, government, and organizations by communicating issues, convening stakeholders, collaborating with others, calculating and analyzing, and constructing solutions. Now therefore be it resolved that the City of Palacka, through its representation on the board of Northeast Florida Regional Council, supports the mission of Northeast Florida Regional Council and its myriad programs, projects, and initiatives that inure the mutual advantage of each unit of local government in the region. The City of Palacka strongly encourages universal engagement and support of Northeast Florida Regional Council by all seven counties and 26 municipalities in the region, passed and adopted by the Palacka City Commission on this ninth day of August, 2018. Terrell Hill Mayor, Betsy Dergis City Clerk, approved by Don Holmes. I'll indicate a motion at this time. This is motion on the floor and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries unanimously. Moving on to item number two. Got a retirement recognition. Got my representatives from the Fire Department. Come on guys, you gotta come up with Marvin.
His crew.
Retirement recognition, of course. Marvin not only is the engineer extraordinary, but he's also a pretty good electrician. For 11 years of dedicated service, engineer Marvin E. Carter, Palacka Fire Department, April 2nd, 2007, through June 13th, 2018. With sincere appreciation for your service to the citizens, officials, and staff of the City of Palacka. Marvin want to give you this for your dedicated service. We definitely miss you, and we know that you've been out on vacation.
Yeah, I saw Marvin walk in and I said, "It must be nice to get off for a month." So he's got a nice beard. But I mean Marvin's one of those guys that not only did we even replace. I mean he was such a stakeholder in the department. He did so much work for us, he did so much work for the city. If there was anything that needed to be done around the city, you could always rely on Marvin. And Marvin's one of those guys that didn't matter what time of day or night and we had a bad call happen, you could always count on Marvin to come in and assist us with that. So not much we can say except we're gonna miss him. Like I said, we can't replace him. You know, we can only try to help, try to find somebody close. But we would like to thank you for all your services you did for us and all the lives that you helped impacted the community of Palacka. It's a blast to be here, thank you so much. I appreciate it, it's been an opportunity to work here and serve the citizens and work for the department. There's a bunch of great guys that work for the Fire Department, y'all will know that. Lots of dedication there, and I appreciate the opportunity.
Give it up for Marvin, thank you.
He's not leaving us completely, he still lives locally, so we're not letting him leave. He's just on a return trip from Colorado, so he's out for a month. That's why we're in here a little bit late. So he took a month off, now he's back, works full swing. While we're up here. We're here with, also tonight, we're out with one, then with a new one. Tonight we're here to recognize firefighter Dustin Harwood. And if his fiancee Ashley could join us up front, please. Dustin came to us about two months ago. Dustin is a recent graduate of First Coast Technical College in St. Augustine, and has spent the last five years as an at-risk youth house parent at a residential group home in St. Augustine, which they're here to join us tonight. So that's really a fantastic thing, that the kids are here and that's really awesome. Dustin was inspired to pursue a career in the fire and EMS sector from his father Brett, who traveled with him when he was young, as a disaster relief worker, and with his company Rescue Net International. He's a resident of Palm Coast with his fiancee Ashley and her daughter Ava Grace. He would like to thank the City of Palacka for giving him the opportunity to serve the community as a firefighter. He came to us originally from Pennsylvania. And just one story, I try to have one for every firefighter that works for us, and I got a really good one here because we had a test one day, and it was really difficult, we couldn't, I mean the agility test was hard that day. And we'd gone through five or six candidates, and nobody had passed. I was like, man, there's one guy left, and it was Dustin. And he came through and he failed during the agility test, and sprained his ankle. And he pulled through, he finished the test, and he looks at me when he come out of the bay, and says, "Chief, this is gonna cost me my opportunity for a job because I got injured." I was like, "Absolutely not." I said, "You're the kind of guy I want to hire." Every single day, he rebounded, got up, and just kept pushing himself. So it's just an honor to have somebody with his kind of work ethic. Right now, his fiancee Ashley is gonna pin his badge on him and welcome him to the City of Palacka. And it's really sharp, so don't stick it. We kinda gotta hurry, he's gotta call again too. No, I'm just kidding. But we'd like, from the city, we'd like to welcome Dustin. Thank you for taking up all your time. Thank you so much.
Thanks for coming, guys.
Next up is our 2018 City of Palacka Intern Program.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
My name is Ivana Boyd. Myself and the nine other interns were presented with a project at the beginning of the internship. The project's goal was to go out and get a view of Palacka from a team's perspective. We brainstormed and collaborated, and came to the bottom conclusion that we could do a video presentation. The video presentation consists of different and various interviews that we got and gathered from our team here. I ask that you may please give this video your undivided attention. Thank you. Hold on, y'all.
No problem.
It's the operator.
Yeah.
If the interns ask you to get in contact to go out and get a view of Palacka from a team's perspective, throughout the video, you will hear from various friends and unbiased teenagers telling how they feel about Palacka and what it means to them. What are some words that come to mind when you hear Palacka?
Oh, potentially. And I say that because you see people doing well for themselves, but they always fall short. And then you see people who really don't care, and it messes up the entire whole of, you know, basically the whole city. Makes everybody look like they don't really care, but you know, there are people that actually care.
Community. Community, because I feel like when things are going on, like mostly I think about like negative things, like maybe a family that is in need of something, or maybe that, you know, family lost, or things like that. I really feel like our community really pulls together and even crosses racial barriers. Drugs. I associate Palacka more with drugs now because drug use is just gone out of control and from all ethnic backgrounds and from all walks of life. Rich people, poor people, white people, black people, Spanish people, it's getting bad, and it's going to every neighborhood. It's not just in the hood, it's not just in the trailer parks. It's everywhere, everywhere, and it's getting, it's getting, it's getting bad.
What is the best thing about Palacka?
Hey, thank you for that.
Well, why you do that at length?
I'm pretty self struggling, self down, and I'm a jerk. Personally, I would have so much of it, like, I didn't have safety, so I'm gonna have to struggle. Personally, I feel like a bad boy, I didn't have to. I didn't have too much to prove. I had to bring my trouble back, which is definitely hard.
After getting the opportunity to actually go around Palacka and hear what our peers had to say firsthand, it was really just an eye-opener on how although Palacka has grown in certain aspects, we can't downplay that or take that away. However, there are still things that everyone can do to help get Palacka to a more equal city as far as things to do for the youth, the young adults, and for our older residents. As a community, we need to just come together, be one, and be cohesive because there are strict in numbers. And if we can enforce this mindset and this attitude, Palacka will be greater than it's ever been.
So the screen is just gonna project some pictures on the internship. I hope that this video was able to grab your attention. This video is not intended to rattle any feathers or make anyone feel any type of way. As I stated earlier, the main focus and goal of this video was just to show a view of Palacka from a team's perspective. To wrap things up, I'm gonna leave you with some last and final words. Anyone can make a change. The most important word that I've said from that sentence? Anyone. It wouldn't matter if you're tall or short, man or woman, black, white, yellow or green. Anyone can make a change. Just by you simply going up to someone and saying, "Have a great day." "You're amazing." "You can do it." "You can be or do anything that you put your mind to." Notice that I did not mention any money involved. There was no money involved, just a few words. You can do it. Just by saying those few words, you can help someone that was gonna commit suicide or just give up on life, you can help them get through life and graduate high school, graduate college, get a good job, and have a great family. Change does not always have to involve money. You have to want to do it from your heart and just do it because you know that you can impact someone's life. I just lost my cousin because no one really went up to him and told him some of these things. He went down one of the troubled paths that the people mentioned in the video. Want to change and help others, not for the fame, or the brand rights, or the fortune, or whatever, or doesn't come with it. I know that's good enough for me. Once again, my name is Ivana Boyd. I thank you guys for having me this summer, and everyone have a great evening.
I'm not even an emotional person, but that alone, it pulled on the strings of my heart, simply because I wanted to be the voice. When I initially came back to Palacka, I wanted to be the voice of the younger constituents of Palacka. I wanted to give opportunities that I did not have while growing up in Palacka. And I'm forever grateful for the commission that sits up here for allowing me the opportunity to be who I am. The opportunity to give back to my community via this internship opportunity. I promise you, I do not take the responsibility of sitting behind this diocese lightly. It's one that I take with great pride. But then again, we have to make sure that when we, as leaders of this community, that we take into consideration everybody of this community. As you noticed throughout the presentation, and this is my first time saying the presentation, and I'm happy I did not say it before, because I wanted to speak from my heart, and that's what I'm doing. First thing that I've noticed was lots of potential. We have lots of potential in this room, outside of this room, in our classrooms. We have lots of potential, and it's up to us as adults to reach back and make sure that we allow those kids to live up to the full potential that they have. These young adults to live up to the full potential that they have, to provide opportunities that they normally would not have outside of this community. One thing that I could say about Palacka, our community knows how to come together when it's time to come together. We see it in good times, we see it in bad times, but we know how to come together and set aside any kind of differences that there are. We do understand that there are drugs in this community, and we're doing what we can, our police force are doing what they can to make sure that they crack down on those particular things. And the last thing, anyone can make change. That goes for me, it goes for every one of you. But once again, I'm grateful for this commission, this community, for providing me the opportunity, the outlets, to make sure that we hear from our younger constituents of Palacka. And this group of interns that we had this year, I can say, were absolutely dynamic. Of course, as anything, you have your ups, you had your downs, but they proved themselves. I gave them this opportunity to say, "Tell us what you think about Palacka." So it's up to us to look at this and see what we can do as a community, as leaders in this community, to make sure that we bring the changes to those things and make sure that we all live up to the potential and make Palacka the best place that it can be. Thank you.
So with that presentation, Ivana, stand up for me just one more second. And tell them just a little bit about who you are.
So my name again is Ivana Boyd. I'm a resident of Palacka, I've been a resident of Palacka for 20 years now. I went to Flagler Palm Coast High School, and I obtained a Division One Basketball Scholarship for athletic abilities, but also academically smart as well. I got the top 50 scholars when I was here in middle school. And I went off to Texas with my university in Texas, played there for a year, didn't really like it. I had some thoughts on coming back home, and I went through it and then transferred to Santa Fe College, over in Gainesville. And I went there and just kinda got a different perspective. It was a different outlook on, I had a different outlook on things, and got another chance at it, and then I got re-recruited again, and now I'm going to Flagler College on another basketball scholarship. School completely paid for. And I did not mention that my mother, she graduated high school, but she wasn't at the top of her class. My dad, he did not graduate high school, but he's in my life, and he still lives in my life, and I love both of my parents. They made me who I am today, but you can't let the people, like your parents, you can't let your circumstances determine who you are, and I did not do that. I took the opportunities that were given to me, and I made the best of what I had, and I made something out of it, and I'm still making something out of it. I have big dreams and big hopes, and I plan on coming back so far I can get me back and doing the best that I can from what I can do.
So while we're standing, Ivana, you epitomize what Palacka is, what Palacka represents. Not only are you an athlete, but you're a student, more so, greater than all of that. You're a leader who loves this community. And so we're proud of you, we're proud of the job of the internship program. There's two more people that I want to make sure that we recognize, and that's Commissioner Campbell and Debra Robinson, for the job that you guys have done with the internship program. You've taken the bull by horns, and you've taken this program to the next level. And we definitely thank you for your work, and we stand and applaud you for the work you've done with the internship. A lot of times we talk about the issues that surround young people not coming back home. This year, more so than anything, we had college interns. And we had brilliant college interns who came in and accepted the challenge and accepted the opportunity. And it creates and it opens the door for additional opportunities throughout, hopefully within the City of Palacka, if not throughout this country, where you represent this community well. And so we're excited and we're proud of that. And that's one of the things that this commission is committed to. And so we're just, we're overjoyed with where this program is going. And we look forward to be twice as big next year. As we move in, I know we've got a long agenda today. Mr. Parker, we've got Tim Parker here, who's our property appraiser. And we want to go ahead and bring Mr. Parker up so that he can talk about the 2018 valid constitutional amendments.
I can defer to this group right here.
Oh, that's fine, we can defer if you want to. We can, we'll move you down the agenda just slightly. And so what we'll do is we'll move into our public comment section, item two on the agenda. We've got a couple of public comment cards here. We've got Ms. Jane Hafner.
I held her, but she was a baby. I was her mother's teacher. I am here on behalf of Pilot Club of Palacka. We're requesting for you all a wheelchair accessible stream with platform and a sidewalk to it at Hank Ryan Park. I love Pup Buggy Park, it is amazing, and I see kids all the time there. It's wonderful. But I do not see any kids in wheelchairs. And we are requesting this because this is our park, this is our focus, brain injuries, and that stuff, excuse me. I have a picture of what we would like, and you can pass it around, I need five copies.
I'll keep one.
Yes, you can keep one. We would like for this to be put on your budget. Perhaps as a lotting item. We know it won't be acted on until it's on the agenda and on the budget, but we would like for you to just consider this. I put a little check mark on it. It's an adult and child swing, it'll hold 700 pounds, which is pretty, that's a pretty substantial weight. But we would like for you very much to consider putting it on your budget, please. And we, the Pilot Club has gotten a clay electric ramp for $15,000, and we are building a playground with the school system at EH Moore School. But many of the children don't attend EH Moore School, and many, and there are adults that want to get in the swing. So we would like for you to please put this on your budget. Thank you.
Was you one of the ones that had Ms. Lockhart?
Yes, and I was gonna tell y'all. Ms. Lockhart dressed y'all down when we had our city proclamation. She chewed you all a new one. And this would make her real happy. She's now our president of Pilot Club. And she was under the conception that the park was not ADA accessible, and it is. It is definitely ADA accessible because it has many forms of disability, but it is not wheelchair accessible. And that's what we're looking for. And our Pilot Club has been working with Hank Ryan Park. We even have a sign there. We were the first ones that helped put in the trail, and I was even the Pilot Club member then. But we, that's our, that's our goal, is to have it there in a more secluded, quiet spot. And it's a beautiful park now.
Did a little bit of researching, from what was communicated and what came back, we know that you all donated monies for something along these lines, but I don't know if it specified what you're asking for.
I think it didn't, and I think that they thought, when you say ADA park, accessible park, they thought that that meant wheelchair. And there was a misconception, and I have got to illustrate on that. But we would still love to see a wheelchair swing at Hank Ryan Park. It has the space, Pup Buggy Park does not have the space, we know that. Plus, that's for smaller children. And this has space at Hank Ryan Park, and I just think it'd be a great place. We all do. So thank you for allowing us to speak.
Thank you. Thank you. I was a member of Pilot Club for many years, and it was about 20 years ago that we started working with the, the Pilot Club started working with the City of Palacka to redo and rebuild Hank Ryan Park because it had gone the way of many parks. And so the Pilot Club worked with the city, we got the grant matches, we applied for the grants, we're the ones that put the trail around it. We actually donated all of the handicapped accessible playground equipment, and we've been working on that park ever since. It was the Pilot Club that donated the money to build the pavilion. It was the Pilot Club that donated the money to build the pavilion, which is wheelchair accessible, you can roll right up to the tables with a wheelchair. And so they gave the city of Palaka $5,000 towards the new park at the riverfront. And there are many features of the park that are wheelchair, that are handicap accessible, but none of it is wheelchair accessible. So that is why they want to put this swing in. They've actually done this at EH Miller. They've done a lot of work at EH Miller on handicap accessibility and bringing those kids some joy. So we're really proud of that. Thank you.
Anyone else? It's Betty Tyson.
I'm here tonight representing St. Mark's Episcopal Church.
Can you state your name and address for the record, please?
Yes, my name is Betty Tyson. 122 Smith Way, East Palaka.
Thank you.
I have a message here from Father Bob, who is our priest. Our church was damaged, had mold damage after Irma. And so we're having a green reopening, and he says it's so much better than I can say it, so I'm just gonna read what he's written. Closed since Irma, but over the past 11 nights, we've been repairing, restoring, and renewing the 1854 church building, and renewing our spiritual lives and fellowship in the process. We have truly been blessed. Come join us now as we celebrate our space and renewing of our mission for our next 165 years in Putnam County. On Thursday, we're going to be having a rededication. There's a supper at 6 o'clock, everyone is invited. I have invitations here, I'll leave in the back. And I also have these flyers, if anyone is interested and you want to take one with you, please feel free to do so. We just want people to come and see the beautiful workmanship in the church. There is not an inch inside this building that hasn't been touched. Everything has been sanded, painted, lovingly worked on, maybe not completely restored, but restores to the best of our abilities. We've replaced the ceiling, it's a sight to behold. I think anyone would enjoy and appreciate seeing it. We're also working on the kitchen, I had, we have a sheet metal business, and so we, I had a couple of the guys help me with some sheet metal, not sheet metal, but stainless steel to go to hunt stoves, and I asked them if they'd like to see the church. Well, at that point, we didn't have any keys in there, but most of the work had been done, and the floors had just been refinished. And I opened the doors, and they go in, and they just gasped, both of them, these dirty, you know, nice guys, but just, but sheet metal workers, you know, but they could appreciate how beautiful this place was and how special it is. Anyhow, I'll continue. So Thursday is the rededication, supper is six, rededication is seven. Saturday is an open house, from 10 to 2. Just join us if you want to see the church, and you know, you have your own church to go to on Sunday or whatever, or come on Sunday, because I have to have you on Sunday morning. We're going to have just one service at 10 o'clock. Rick Westbury is going to be the priest on Sunday, you may remember him. He was the priest at Christ Church, Christ Episcopal Church in Humpy River Beach, which is probably one of the, if not the largest church in the southeast, of Episcopal churches in the southeast side, close to it. And so he's been having a successful career, and he's gonna be, but he loves Palaka. I've been in his church in front of pictures, and he always talked about Palaka. Every time I was there, I don't know if I've got Palaka written all over me, but he loves the place, and so he's gonna be here to help us celebrate. So anyhow, I hope, I hope you all will consider it and come and join us. Does anybody have any questions?
Is this next Thursday?
Oh, I'm sorry, it's Thursday the 23rd. Okay, did I?
Can we just pass this one up here, if you was calling it for us? Just the cars? There, okay, I just checked before I got, okay.
Do you have one?
We're good.
I don't think he's got yours, you're the young, Mayor Hill didn't get it. I think they thought you already had one, so you're welcome. And then we put a box comment.
Let's give a round of applause for the rededication. We were talking a little bit about the church and some of the history that surrounds the church. One interesting fact is it was donated, the land for the church was donated by Representative Bronson back when, back in the 1850s. And so that's just an interesting fact that I've learned along the way. It was a 10-acre land grant that took place during the time in which City Hall was also, the land for City Hall was also donated from a historical perspective, but we are definitely glad to see those renovations are completed and that the church will be back up.
Well, we have more work to do, clearly, but we've come a long way.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you so much for allowing me to do this.
Thank you. Next up is item three on the agenda, which is our consent agenda. I've got a couple items on the consent agenda that I want to remove those. Excuse me? Well, Pete Tim wanted me to pass this for a second. So we're gonna pull items three J and K. I think there may be some folks interested in K. Are there any other items that we wish to have removed from the consent agenda?
I'm going to motion to approve items excluding J and K for discussion.
Second.
There's a motion on the floor in a second. Commissioner McCaskill, you ready for the discussion?
Question.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Proposed motion carries. Moving on to item three J. We've got one speaker car at the base of this item. Mr. Lecker kitchens, item three J is adopted resolution number 2018 R 75. Terminated Zariya K. Fosin, the city manager, appointed Betsy Jordan Bigger as interim city manager and establishing interim city manager compensation effective 7/23 of 2018.
Thank you, Mayor, Elite kitchens, 1027 South 12th Street, Palaka, Florida. I just would like to request that you delete section three out of the resolution, which says that the scheduled city manager and/or a successor will begin the process of aiding the commission in conducting an extensive search process for the requirement recruitment and appointment of Palaka's next city manager. I would like for you to pull that from this resolution and do that at a later date, given that the budget's coming up, and Ms. Bigger, this is her first city manager, is the interim city manager. Thank you.
Second. Your second city.
This is her second interim.
Yes. So that's the J.
So you.
I'll go for that. I'll make that motion if we do that, so that it gives us some time, because that's a second. Okay, that's an extensive job and.
So there's a motion on the floor in a second to delete section three. Is there any further discussion?
Question.
Question's called. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Proposed motion carries unanimously. You're stuck with us a little while longer.
We're riding the ship.
We need to make a motion and make it permanent here.
All right, moving on, we'll move on to it as soon as we put it on the agenda.
Special call meeting.
Item 3K, adopted resolution number 2018 R 76, concurring with the interim city manager's recommendation to appoint interim fire chief Keith JR Grimes as the city of Palaka fire chief. Anyone who's interested in standing by this guy as he comes forward at this time can come up, unless you have on a Crescent City Raiders shirt. So come on up. Come on up, guys, everybody, family, family, friends, everyone comes forward.
We still got the photo on this, right?
I need you guys to stay down here for a few seconds.
Okay.
So everyone can just stand across the front, if you can just stand across the front.
Wow.
Come on over. So I wanted to pull this item, no one can see us, but you can hear us. You're fine. I wanted to pull this item so that we can look at the loving support that's up here. You've got folks past and present who are standing up here because they are just excited about an opportunity for new leadership as we take on, I wouldn't even say a new direction, because you've been in a position for 13 months. I will say that at this point, I'll stop talking, and we'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second. Third.
So we got a motion by Commissioner Campbell, we've got a second by Commissioner McCaskill. Is there any unreadiness?
Question.
Question.
What's your question?
Make JR.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you guys, always.
So now we can officially call you chiefs.
Chief. He's been a chief for 13 now.
You got a, you got a couple words to say. Thank you guys for being here, first of all. Before we let you talk, I know there are a couple folks in here who wanted to make sure that they got here. Terry Suggs, where are you?
Right here.
Come up here for a second, you just stand up for a little bit and take on this end. So. And before Terry talks, just know that your speech can't be as long as Jason Shaw's speech.
I don't think anyone's will be as long as Jason Shaw's. And no, I just wanted to be here not just to, just to see, because I think you made an excellent choice tonight, JR has done an outstanding job all through his career. And I can tell you, in the two plus years I was here, that there was never an opportunity that the city needed anything, and JR was not there. And it's a very proud moment for JR and his family, but also for the city of Palaka. And if you'll, first of all, let me, that's it, congratulations.
Thank you.
And anything you need, please.
I will, well, I've had a lot of good mentors, or models and mentors.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Well, just a, just a quick story about JR and how the, not just the Palaka family feels about JR, but how the community feels about JR. The mayor will, he'll remember this story. I think it was Hurricane Matthew, me and the mayor and JR hopping in a public safety vehicle and went out to do some work, and right after the storm, and was pulling some limbs and all out of the streets and making sure that the flooding was in a way that we could actually get vehicles in and out. And so the mayor and I jumped out of the vehicle to pull this limb out of the street, and the only thing we heard was, thanks JR. JR, you are absolutely beloved by not only your staff, but also by this community. And I can't think of a better person to lead this department than you, sir. So congratulations.
He's the Bigger's. It was your recommendation.
It's about time.
Thank you, and I'd like to thank Mr. Suggs, I mean, he put me where I am today, and I'd like to thank you for the opportunity that you gave me. To the commission, thank you for your support and your trust. I'm gonna do the best I can. Thanks to my family, my family's support is just unbelievable. And I have the best staff in the world, so my job is not, you know, it doesn't have to be that difficult, because I've got a lot of hardworking people to work with me. And it just makes the day go by. Ms. Becker, I've spent a lot of hours in her office, thank you for all your help. But if we're telling stories about Mr. Suggs, I mean, honestly, we gotta tell the right one. It was during Hurricane Hermine, or tropical storm Hermine, and I was riding around Mr. Suggs, and it was one of the first opportunities I really had to ride around with him. He told me, he says, chief, we gotta get up around 4 o'clock, make sure the garbage trucks can run some piss. I said, we're all over, I said, we'll be all, I said, we'll make sure it gets done. We run all night, and we've been pulling limbs, and Mr. Suggs had water come over his boots a couple times, and he was all right, he said, I'm gonna take a quick nap, he said, but make sure we get out for garbage collection. And I said, okay. So about 6 o'clock, Mr. Suggs wakes up, he says, we missed the chance to go out and collect garbage. I said, no, I said, you did. He goes, what did you make? And I said, Mr. Suggs, I said, seven takers went off in the room, and you never bugged. I said, I said, I appreciate, he was not gonna do any good. But I really do appreciate the opportunity, I'm gonna serve as long as I can, do the best I can. So thank you for all your support, Ms. Bigger, thank you.
Thank you.
And the commission, Mayor Hill, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Can I tell JR, please tell, please tell your daddy so he can tell my son that you've been appointed, because I think every time I go home, he asks me, have y'all appointed him yet?
So your speech was shorter than Chief Wey Shaw's speech, about 33 minutes. And so, so definitely, JR, we are, we're happy for you, and we're proud of the work that you've done thus far, and we look forward to more great things. And we definitely love your department and the work that you guys have done as well. Even though your family's here with Crescent City Raider stuff on in the Palaka Panther territory, we're glad to have you guys here.
And we still have not.
And so.
Oh, my.
Moving to the agenda, next up is item 1E, which we passed earlier, which is our 2018 ballot constitutional amendments. Tim Parker, our property appraiser, Bill Gators. Just in time. Gator Nation always there strong. Go Panthers.
They got good colors.
Hey, Tim Parker, 312 Oak Street. So thank you for the opportunity to share these amendments with you, they're gonna be on the ballot. Some of them are pretty straightforward, some of them are a little bit confusing, so we're gonna just run through them real quick. We'll tell you a little bit about what we did in our office, for those of you who don't know. This is an interesting map, it shows 31% of our county is exempt. Okay, we need to figure out, you as commissioners, our county commissioners, how to capitalize on that particular aspect of our county. Will you appraise your property? So for those of you in here, we're getting ready to send out our notice of proposed taxes, which says this is not a bill, do not pay. Just remember, it doesn't say ignore it, go to the trash. You look at that, keep in mind that maybe you do with your value. If you don't like the value, you give me a call. If you don't like the amount of taxes that you have to pay, call these people up here. This is a list of our top 10 taxpayers, and what you'll notice is, in those top 10, it's kind of a pretty scary thing to look at, that these top 10 taxpayers make up 28% of our tax bowl. We really need to diversify our tax bowl. I was talking with Robert Suggs over at Clay County, I asked him, what percent of your top 10 taxpayers make up the tax bowl? He said 6%. So much better position to be with them. Portability, if anybody in here is thinking about selling their home, anytime before the end of the year, you need to see me immediately, okay? This is an ability to carry your savings between your assessed value and your market value with you when you move to another location. On your home state property, your assessed value cannot go up more than 2.1% this year. The maximum it can go up is 3% a year. Okay, this shows an example of a home on West River Road, the difference between the red bear and the blue bear, that's your portability. We want to be able to, as legitimately as we can, maximize your market value so you have more savings to take to the new location, you have a newer time period to do that in. Calamity and misfortunes, so we're in hurricane season, we just went through hurricane season. If your home is destroyed by fire, flood, hurricane, whatever, come see us at our office. We can freeze your values out of what they were prior to your calamity, as long as you don't build above 10% of the area that you had before that calamity. This is different from the hurricane abatement that we're gonna be talking about here in the newspapers in the next few months to come, which the city and the county will have to deal with on a separate issue. Okay, so what happened with our two 2018 legislations coming up? Constitutional Revision Commission. Constitutional Revision Commission is comprised of about 37 folks, okay? So appointed by the governor, somebody speaks with that. So appointed by the governor, somebody speaks at the house, somebody, uh, President, Senate, Supreme Court, and Attorney General is a part of that. At one point in time, they were looking at four hundred and fifteen different public proposals, okay? So in theory, there could have been four hundred and fifteen things when they're valid, but they realized they couldn't do that, so they crammed them all into thirteen of them. It's actually, and then six through thirteen are. I give my staff a lot of leeway with this presentation. Hopefully, after this presentation, you'll be a little bit better informed about what's gonna be going on. So amendment one, uh, this is a very important amendment, okay? I'm not gonna read the proposal or the, uh, the ballot summary to you because you've got it there. If you didn't get a copy, back on the back shelf there are summaries of the amendments. So essentially, what this does, it increases your home state exemption on the value between seventy-five and, I mean, sorry, between a hundred and a hundred and twenty-five thousand. So right now, if your home's valued at least seventy-five thousand, you give the twenty-five thousand dollar exemption and then you get additional exemption on the value between fifty and seventy-five thousand. This would give an additional exemption on that value between a hundred and a hundred and twenty-five thousand. So what does that mean to Putnam County, City of Palacka? Well, it would reduce revenue in Putnam County by about eight hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars if we were not what's called a fiscally constrained county. So we, as Putnam County, would get back about ninety-five percent as long as the state legislature funds this particular provision within the, uh, within the budget each year. Well, how about the City of Palacka and the other cities in the county? No, there's no such thing as a fiscally constrained city. So cities just take the hip, okay? For Palacka, it's estimated somewhere around twenty-two, twenty-three thousand dollars if amendment one passes, okay? And so if you vote yes, you're supporting an exemption on the value between a hundred and a hundred and twenty-five thousand for property taxes, okay? Just remember that whenever somebody gets an exemption, somebody else has to pay for it. So this exemption is believed across the state with benefit of about fifty percent of residences in Florida. Amendment number two. So I'm really not gonna take any questions during this. I will be around with the ground for the whole thing, so you can ask any questions afterwards, okay? Uh, amendment number two, this is to put in place permanently the ten percent cap that exists right now of commercial properties, okay? So if this amendment does not pass, what does that mean to Putnam County? Well, essentially, to Putnam County, nothing, because we're already getting the money back because we are fiscally constrained county. So we're getting back ninety-five percent of that money already. But City of Palacka would actually be kind of a windfall. Uh, they would garner or gain about seventy-four thousand dollars if amendment two does not pass, does not continue. Now, the Chamber of Commerce is really pushing this. You're gonna see a lot more about this amendment as it gets closer to November. The chamber is really pushing this to pass it. But if you vote yes on this amendment, it will make permanent that ten percent cap on commercial properties. Voter control gambling in Florida. Again, I'm not gonna read the ballot summary, but what does this really mean? I mean, who is behind this? This is a citizens initiative that brought this on the ballot. You have to collect a certain number of signatures all across the state of Florida to get your amendment on the ballot. So we're just gonna talk about it in the legislature about gambling, about the, uh, Seminole Tribe and how it would affect things. So these folks kind of took it in their own hands to go forward and put this on the ballot. So the two main contributors that are trying to get this on the ballot, or trying to get this passed, are Disney and Seminole Tribe. So you decide how that plays into your decision on how this amendment, or how you, how you may vote on this amendment. So a yes vote supports this amendment to provide voters, through citizens' initiated ballot measures, with the exclusive right to decide whether to authorize casino gambling in Florida. Amendment four, letting restoration amendment. This one's pretty straightforward, uh, put on by the Floridians for our fair democracy. Essentially, it's saying that if you vote yes, you're going to authorize and automatically restore the right to vote for people who are prior to felony convictions. Right now, the governor has to, uh, restore those other rights. So, uh, that's what a yes vote means on that. Amendment five, this is one that Governor Scott really wants to push and get pushed forward, but prohibits the legislature from imposing or raising taxes. So this, uh, doesn't authorize the state to, uh, control a municipality school board or any other special district, but a yes vote supports requiring a two-thirds vote on each chamber of the State Department legislature to enact new taxes or fees for increasing existing ones. Okay, you all seen this logo? Burgundy, have it your way? Well, what amendment six through the end of our presentation are gonna say is, you can't have it your way, all right? All these, well, some of these amendments have multiple parts to them. So you can't choose which part of an amendment that you want to vote for, which part sounds good to you. It's all or nothing, okay? So amendment six, for example, has three different parts to it. Now, you can read through this stuff, but, um, some of it is just not gonna make much sense to you and some of it doesn't make much sense to me. But one of those parts is a part called Marcy's Law. So I have a short video clip I wanna show you about Marcy's Law.
On March twenty-third, uh, Adam Lawson, uh, broke into our home, murdered my wife, stole her car, several, uh, appliances from the house.
I am a survivor of childhood sexual abuse from the time that I was about ten years old until I was sixteen. I was actually abused each and every day by my family's live-in nanny.
My daughter Peyton is twenty-three, had, um, graduated from, um, College of Charleston and then was going to graduate school. She, this was a parent to do that. She was brutally, savagely tortured and murdered.
We need to support Marcy's Law because supporting victims of, of any crime is, is essential to fairness in our justice system.
We have had eleven hearings so far. The only thing that has been concluded in those hearings is that he does have to stand trial, but again, not one time have we been notified by the state or by the courts or anybody when these hearings are.
And so it's so important that Marcy's Law passed here in the state of Florida. We must stand up for those who aren't yet able to stand on their own. And this document, in our constitution, says a lot about us as a people and our want and desire to protect victims of crime all over. Because as a victim, you have a right to be heard. You have a right to be seen. You have a right to be present. You have a right to be a part of the conversation. And you have a right to your voice.
I'm a fierce proponent and advocate for Marcy's Law. I know what it's like to be a victim and how that feels. And I want victims to have every right that they should be entitled to in the process.
Support for Marcy's Law is support for citizens in Florida. Most people don't expect to be victimized by crime, but it can happen to anyone and it's bound to happen to somebody who doesn't expect it. So support Marcy's Law and support Florida citizens.
I am supporting Marcy's Law because I do think that the victims are forgotten entities in this, in, in our trial settings. It's as if the victims are, the surviving victims are not even a part of the equation. When we have suffered the greatest loss, she was everything I wanted and she was taken from me. I miss her more than you can imagine.
Hey, Henry Nichols, the co-founder of Rod Com Corporation started campaigning with this type of legislation to increase the rights and privileges of victims. This legislation is named after Henry Nichols's sister, Marcy Nichols, who was murdered by her ex-boyfriend in nineteen eighty-three. Henry and his mother were also confronted by Marcy's ex-boyfriend after his release from prison. They were unaware of, of his release from prison on bail. So another part of this amendment is raising the retirement ages of judges from seventy to seventy-five. And then another part, the last part, is prohibit states' courts from destroying to administrative agencies' interpretation of the state statute or rule of lawsuits. So I don't know a whole lot about that last part, but my understanding of it is, for example, if you were a judge and you had a case that involved the Department of Environmental Protection and they were experts on a, on a particular area, rule or statute, then judges have in the past deferred to that agency's expertise. If you vote yes on this amendment, then it would not allow a judge to base decision based solely on that administrative agency's interpretation. So a no vote would be the opposite of that. Amendment seven, there's not a lot of controversy from individuals that I've talked to about this, but it does require, um, you know, sixty percent vote. All of these statutes require sixty percent vote. So if you vote yes, then it's gonna support this amendment to require employers to provide health benefits as the state legislature divides to surviving spouses of first responders. Also to the surviving spouses of active, that active duty U.S. Armed Forces members who are accidentally killed or unlawfully and intentionally, uh, killed. It also requires a nine-member vote on the Board of Trustees and a twelve-member vote on the Board of Governors to increase the college fee and it places the current structure of the state system of higher education in the Florida constitution. So I've talked with some folks at the college. They don't really have an issue with this amendment, so I expect this one to probably, uh, probably pass. Amendment eight, there is a lawsuit filed on amendment eight, okay? So we'll see, it's, it's filed by the League of Women Voters. Um, there's several parts to amendment eight, okay? If you vote yes on this amendment, you would establish a term limit of eight consecutive years for school board members. And you would also allow state government to operate and supervise and control public schools, re-charter schools, okay? Take it away from the local school boards who currently have oversight over charter schools and put it within state government. And it would require the legislature to promote some civic literacy classes in public education. So at least one individual in the school system thought that this was a bad idea, taking away control of charter schools in amendment seven. Amendment number nine, now, I don't know what the CRC was actually putting in their baking devices, but they decided that, uh, these two things were somewhat related. Maybe it's offshore oil and gasoline and it prohibits baking and then those indoor workplaces, okay? So, uh, if you vote yes, this is one of those kind of strange amendments, okay? If you vote yes, you're voting no, okay? If you vote yes, you're supporting this amendment to ban offshore oil drilling on, uh, and natural gas on land beneath state waters and you're voting yes to vote no for no baking devices on indoor workplaces, okay? So it's kind of a opposite thing of what you might think you're, you're voting for. So you got a little heads up on that. Okay, amendment ten is being challenged in court and we'll get to the part that's actually being challenged, but, uh, the, the language is pretty long. I mean, I think it's actually, you cannot have more than seventy-five words to describe about summary, okay? Some of these could use a lot more words to describe everything that's going on in a particular issue. But a yes vote on this supports this amendment to require, rather than authorize the legislature to provide for a state Department of Veterans repairs, okay? It also creates an Office of Domestic Security and Counterterrorism, all right? Requires the legislature to convene regular session on the second Tuesday of January of evenly numbered years. The controversial part on this is to prohibit counties from abolishing certain local offices. Sheriff, task collector, property appraiser, supervisor elections, and clerk of the court are all constitutional officers. Sometimes people think that, for example, the property appraiser is actually a department of the county or not, or a standalone constitutional office. So what this is saying is, those counties that are charter counties and that have appointed their sheriff, for example, uh, they're saying that you're taking away our rights to control our local government. So that's the controversial part of this amendment. That's the part that the lawsuits have actually been filed on. Uh, for example, the sheriff in, uh, Volusia County reports to a county manager, okay, for his, uh, particular job. Amendment number eleven. This is probably one of the toughest ones to actually get a handle on. For example, the league's provisions, uh, I'm sorry, the, the moves obsolete language repealed by voters, okay? Who, raise your hand, know what that exactly means? But what it means is that if you vote yes on this amendment, uh, there's a custom, uh, you're, you're going to repeal a constitutional provision prohibiting foreign-born persons ineligible for citizenship, owning, inheriting, disposing of, possession of property, all right? That's already, I think, been proven, uh, illegal federally. So this is, this, there was an attempt to have a, a separate amendment passed a few years ago and it failed, did not get a sixty percent vote. Repeal obsolete constitutional language. In two thousand, Floridians voted for a high-speed rail, okay? And then we decided in two thousand and four that that wasn't such a good idea, let's take it out of the constitution. Well, they forgot to actually remove it from the constitution, so now they have to put it forth to us again so that we can vote in what they're hoping, yes, so that we can repeal this obsolete language that's in our constitution. And then the last part, delete the custom provision, act an amendment to a criminal statute does not affect the prosecution of a crime committed before the statute's amendment. I wanna read you something real quick out of the Florida Trend, um, article that speaks to this and says, "Meanwhile, some of the strongest support for allowing lawmakers to make criminal changes retroactive has come from gun rights groups such as the NRA-aligned Unified Sportsmen of Florida. The push appears to stem from the hope that it might ensure that an NRA-backed law the legislature passed last year, which made it clear that prosecutors, not defendants, must meet the burden of proof in pre-trial standard ground hearings, can be applied retroactively." Okay? How do you get that out of that ballot language? I have no idea. But people know what they're doing when they put this ballot language together and it's just kind of, it's not supposed to be misleading, okay? But I certainly don't know how you get that out of that. Okay, lobbying and use of public, uh, office by, uh, public officials. Last, before last election, there was a property appraiser in St. Lucie County that actually had his own lobbying firm and was still a property appraiser. And there was a lot of press about that. So a yes vote supports prohibiting public officials from lobbying for compensation during the official's term and for six years after the official leaves office. Now, um, at least the Florida Trend article, they kind of argue that that could lead to, uh, you know, really qualified people that would normally want to be a part of the political system, maybe take a second step back and say, "What am I supposed to do for six years after I leave public office?" So that's a little bit of argument, uh, in, in that regard. So amendment thirteen, I don't wanna really make light of this particular amendment, okay? But I try to find some lightness as it is associated with this because people who are opposed to grayhound racing, opposed to inhumane treatment of animals are, are very passionate. But a judge has blocked this amendment currently. Uh, now, these, these change every day, so I did not read anything about amendment thirteen in today's newspaper or online, but there is a proposal, the judge has blocked amendment thirteen currently from being on the ballot, but, uh, there is a push to get it put back on to the ballot, okay? And one of the, um, statements that the judge was relying on was, um, it says that, you know, the amendment. the amendment language would establish humane treatment of animals as a fundamental value in the Constitution. And she was concerned, what did that actually mean? You know, how far in reachy would that apply? So the amendment would not just ban gambling on greyhound races, but would ban gambling on all dog races.
Are you sure? I'm looking over closely. Animal, they go. One of the people doing house of games, one of the extreme outside, moving in very fast here in the outside of baby ball. How good was baby ball in highlighted title? Baby ball went into the championship event. Even baby ball comes back within ten to fifteen minutes after that, very morose of that, and baby ball.
All right, so thank you for your time. I hope that was at least a little bit of the turn. Then I'll be around afterwards if you have any questions, and certainly you can contact me in the office.
Thank you, sir.
Appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Parker, for your time. Moving the agenda to item number four, public hearing and resolution. Annual fire assessment, item A, public hearing on non-advalorm fire assessments for fiscal year 2018-19. Can you read the question?
Oh, sorry. A resolution of the City Commission of the City of Palacca, Florida approving the fiscal year 2018-19 non-advalorm assessment role for fire protection services, facilities, and programs directing certification of the Assessment Collection Act, confirming required statutory notice, and imposing and levying fire service assessments, providing directions, and providing effective date.
Second. This is motion on the floor by Commissioner Campbell, the second, but question in the board. We're now up on the floor for public hearing. Is there anyone here for public hearing? Seen no one, but close public hearing. Is there any additional discussion?
Question.
Questions, call. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed motion carries unanimously. Moving on to item B, annual assessment resolution, 2018 R. 78, fire assessment for fiscal year 1819, which has been updated based on changes to law, but is still based on same rates and exempt properties direction given by the City Commission fiscal year 1516. All right, so we did it cumulatively. Moving on, item five. Public hearing ordinance, 7,000 Old Wolf Bay Road. Planning board recommendation to amend the future land use map and element of commercial from Putnam County Urban Services. Mark Bird Properties owner, Palacca building and zone advocate.
An ordinance of the City of Palacca, Florida providing that the future land use map of the adopted comprehensive plan be amended with respect to the following parcel of land, less than ten acres in size, from Putnam County, U.S. Urban Services, to C.O.M. Commercial, for 7,000 Old Wolf Bay Road, properly located in section nine, township ten, South Range, twenty-six east, providing for survivability and providing for an effective date.
So move.
Thank you.
This is motion on the floor, Mr. Smith. Mr. Leighton.
Mr. Chair, Mr. Mayor, Chairman of Commissioners, the site was before you, two years ago. You actually adopted this same land use amendment in September eighth, 2016. Why are we here today? In July of 2015, there was a requirement for the city to have completed evaluation report of their comprehensive plan. That did not occur. You had a one-year period to complete that, so amendments that occurred from July first of 2016 until you became into compliance recently, after you reheard. Now, the annexation was a local action, that goes forward and that is completed. The zoning is a local action, that has been completed. The planning commission recommendations stand, so the only action before you is to adopt, re-adopt this land use amendment today. I have about nine or ten additional, probably nine other items to bring forward to you in upcoming meetings. I hope to, this explanation today will carry forward, and we'll wait to establish quicker the next time.
Thank you. Is there any further, we're now up on the floor. We're just, we're now up for public hearing, is there anyone here for public hearing? Seen no one, but close public hearing. Questions, been called. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Moving on to item number six, water taxi and dock operation services agreement with Palacca Boathouse Marina LLC. Mr. Holmes and Mr. Griffin.
You have on your agenda the proposed agreement between the city and the Palacca Boathouse Marina for operation of your area where your docks and ship store concessions area would be on the Palacca riverfront, as well as your water taxis. The agreement is twenty-eight pages long, and I think I provided that to you a week or more ago. More recently, I provided you with a summary, and my summary is too long also, but it's hard to condense twenty-eight pages into much less than what I did and not leave out substantial portions. So if you'll, you can look at the agreement, of course, it should be looked at, and as my emails to you indicated, it should be looked at word for word, but my summary attempts to highlight the most important terms and also to perhaps arrange them and organize them in a fashion that might be more logical for you in your review. Particularly, I tried to set forth the items that would require expenditures by the city in one section of the summary, and then the projected or potential revenue sources that the city would enjoy from the agreement in another section, but all in the same, all of these in one pod, all the revenue items and all the expense items. Also, I've highlighted for you the term of the agreement, which is an initial term of seven years with two automatic renewals for the, for Palacca Boathouse Marina. And I've noted that they retain the right to terminate the agreement from their end without cause on ninety days' notice. The city doesn't have that same right. In an earlier email to you, I mentioned to you that we have attempted, and I believe that Palacca Boathouse Marina has attempted in good faith with us to negotiate over a lot of months, an agreement that we could both find acceptable. We, I think, reached impasse on some terms, we just couldn't seem to find a middle ground on, and so the last request that we made of Palacca Boathouse Marina was just to give us their best, their best agreement, their best offer, and that you, the policymakers and decision-makers, would have to decide whether or not their best offer was something you could work with. I'll leave room for questions. Staff has attempted to put some numbers to some of the expense items. Mr. Griffin, I know Ms. Becker have tried their best to put some numbers on the expense items. You will note that the agreement would provide no revenue for the city during the first year at all, unless Palacca Boathouse Marina chooses not to furnish the concessions area in the main building, in which case they would start paying rent. If they didn't furnish the concessions area in the main, or equip the concessions area in the main building with their money, then they would start paying rent of five hundred dollars per month, six months into the agreement. But if that doesn't occur, if it does occur, if they do furnish or equip the concessions area with their own money, they would get a credit each month up to thirty thousand dollars, so basically that would negate any rent. So for practical purposes, the first year would be no income for the city, and there would be significant expense. Mr. Griffin, Ms. Logan could better detail for you the expense, but I believe it's approximately seventy grand the first year is the projection. We tried not to make a recommendation in favor of or against, because we didn't really think that that was our province. If we had been able to negotiate a agreement that we, that we staff thought we could buy into, we would have, of course, made a recommendation. We understand there's a lot of difficulties here, so what we felt the need to do is get you something, get something in front of you so that we could get direction, because I think we kind of reached an impasse. I will say that for the majority of the agreement, or the majority of the agreement is for you to consider, I have a lot of concern about the twenty-one-year term. Great concern about the twenty-one-year term and us not being able to opt out of the twenty-one-year term because of the fact that the agreement exclusively gives PBM the right to conduct almost all recreational commercial activities in that area for twenty-one years. And that's, that's a very difficult concept for, I believe, a governmental entity to embark on when you commit that much of a very unique public area to one vendor for that period of time. With the exception of that, I won't have any comment unless you have questions, or unless you have questions with Jonathan or Ms. Logan.
Can I, can I talk?
Let me let staff go ahead and go ahead with your presentation. Do you guys have any numbers you want to share with us at this point?
Commissioners, Mayor, City Manager, what we've done is we've looked at the contract, and based upon some of our past expenditures, some of these items are costs that we have incurred in the past, things relating to boat insurance, dock maintenance, submerged way and lease expense, as well as aquatic drainage treatment. And by our estimation, including some of the non-recurring costs in year one, that would be the city's responsibility, would be approximately seventy thousand dollars. Now, we are not making any representation that these costs are warranted or not warranted. Again, some of these costs are associated with driving additional activity to park, which is the goal. Moving into year two, and then year five, you're approximately fifty-five thousand dollars and increasing every year.
You say it'd be fifty-five thousand dollars of cost and then increasing from there every year?
Yes, sir. Costs don't stay stagnant, and they go up every year.
I understand. And that will be for the city?
Yes, sir, based upon the agreements in front of you.
Come on, you can jump in.
I'm sorry, I didn't understand. Are you talking about year two?
Yes, ma'am, so year one is a higher number, because there are some non-recurring costs in there. For instance, the signage costs, boat improvements, and the temporary fuel installation.
And you're saying the fifty-five is not an increase of fifty-five, it's fifty-five total?
Yes, sir, to be clear, year one cost expenses seventy thousand, year two costs fifty-five thousand.
Jonathan, also, just to make sure we clarify, these are, these are our best estimates, right?
Yes, sir.
You have some items that are essentially almost impossible to predict, such as if there were substantial or major repairs required to either the upland or the boats themselves, the city, the city under the agreement would be responsible for anything that was considered major, correct?
I think the sea's one, a one hundred dollar, sure.
Two fifty on the boat, I believe, and one hundred on the upland, I believe, is the numbers. That would be the threshold. If it's an expense over that, it's our expense, the city's expense. So it's impossible to predict those. You can kind of predict ordinary wear and tear, but if you had something unforeseen, then that could be an expense, obviously, that would be there.
Just for the record, that's Allison Currie.
Yes, sir, building maintenance, we use the same standard that we do throughout the city. You try and get to the industry standard, and you work from one to three dollars per square foot based upon construction and age.
Any questions?
Well, but that particular, this whole thing, what we're talking about, we're not talking about a seven-year deal. We're talking twenty-one if we vote on this right now, so it's just pretty substantial. In addition to the fifty, well, seventy thousand for one first year, second year and beyond, you're locked in the twenty-one years, it's not feasible. Just economically, it's not economically feasible for
Like, just say, like, I got you.
For us here in the city.
Okay. Any other questions, Mr. Sam? I want to give an opportunity to Boathouse Marina.
Okay.
I, I want to give you all some history before.
Give, let them get a presentation, you can give us as much of a history lesson as you want. I just want to make sure we get the presenter out of the way before we get to it. Do you want to come forward and establish, Currie?
Good evening, Mayor, City Commission, and City Manager. We're here with the agreement and a little bit, I don't have those figures that Jonathan just came forward, so I'm not sure what those seventy thousand dollars consists of. But one of the concerns, obviously, that you've had is the term, and that's something that we've got. We've got a consultant here, a Marina consultant, Merrill Seaman. He right now operates a Marina over in Topper Springs, very similar to what we were talking about, which is a partnership between the city and private. He's got, his agreement is twenty-five years. He can give you some background and some of the reasoning why that term is going to be necessary, given the amount of investment that's going to be made upfront in those first five years. Boathouse is going to be required to put a bunch of money into this to get it up and running. They won't be able to recoup that investment with a shorter term.
How much money? How much money are we talking?
You mean investment?
How do you estimate at what the, what your, what your investment is in the first five years?
Yeah, we've probably already got sixty-five, seventy thousand. I've got my time invested in it. We'll spend two hundred thousand dollars in the next two years between the boat and revenue streams, and multiple ways of attracting people to the facility. And so that's what's now, is that there's a reduced amount of revenue streams. So we have to depend on the water taxis, we have to depend on rental boats, which we'll buy and pay for, canoes, kayaks, we'll do debt boats, and eventually house boats. That's, that's when really you're going to spend a lot of money. So, you know, I'm not sure, I was just reviewing some of the expenses Jonathan's referring to. I see there's signage, it's a, you know, it's a one-time expense. You've got debt rates to the boat, it was to be delivered with some components that we're talking about, the pride of Palacca, too. It was to be delivered with some components that it doesn't have. It doesn't have a generator, doesn't have an air conditioner heater, which we could live without those, but the wiring is incomplete, where we can plug it in, charge the system when we come in. It only charges when the boat's running at speed. It's got a lot of problems like that, needs an adequate P.A. system. So I think I saw the estimate of that, it's ten thousand dollars. I would have thought it was a little less, but anyway, so there's some fixed costs for the city, but the city was going to provide all that from the beginning. That's not, that's nothing new, that, you know, that we didn't expect the city was going to provide. And then, and so the revenue, the first year, and if I can clarify this, and if the contract doesn't read this way, we'll correct it. And keep in mind, we had major adjustments to it after our meeting with Saraya. The last meeting with Saraya, we readjusted, and then Saraya left, and we said, well, we can't make that work. So now we've readjusted the contract, reduced everything from our side to try to keep the cost down for the city and for us. And so the, the way we look at it is, the target date of March one, we could begin operating. We would commit that that could be the official opening day, March one. It is the city time, the docks aren't ready at this point in time, it's not the electric and water, or the docks aren't in total working condition. There's not fuel in place, which we have to have to operate, rental boats, water taxis. Not sure at what point we'll be able to sell fuel to the public, because the system we're talking about doing, the temporary system we've discussed, doesn't allow volume or positioning for us to sell fuel to a lot of private owners. So the position that the city's in with the infrastructure right now, and that we're in with the concession operation, we said we will begin operation March one if the city can get the docks ready, and the city will have some kind of temporary fuel in place. We'll commit and begin operations March one. Within six months of that time, with or without a concession operation, we'll begin paying those fees that are agreed to, five hundred dollars a month. The hundred dollars of, by the way, this agreement is an agreement that began with the city, was given to us by the city in 2014, I believe it was, from Michael Simbore, the city manager. This is not a written agreement that we came up with, and the numbers have been modified slightly, but there's, they haven't been changed that much. They've been adjusted to accommodate what the current infrastructure and the potential revenue streams are that are there. So, you know, we've invested a lot to get to this point, and in regards, I can just fast forward, and I'll be happy to answer any questions, and I'll get back up. But in regards to the term, and we'll let Merrill respond to this, it's going to take our projections, and we've shared that with the city, and happy to share all the performance and all the books that are open to the city, but it's going to take our projections, and we've shared that with the city, and all the books that were open to the city, but it's going to take us at minimum, whether it's a concession operation or without a concession operation. Without a concession operation, it's almost the third, middle of 30 before we break even. With concession operation, we believe we can get there in the middle of the second year. It will take us another two years to recoup our initial investment up to just opening the door. So, we figure we're going to be four to five years in before we get to where we, we've recouped any, any bit of the money. So, to, to turn around and walk away from something you spent that much money to build at the time, after seven years, would not be something I'm interested in doing or anybody, any other businessman I know, because it takes too much time, effort, there's too many other things you've got to do. So, we're in this because we believe in what the city's doing. I have a huge investment in Boathouse Marina, and it's critical that what happens on the riverfront, at the Riverfront Park, that is successful, it doesn't start and stop. And that's, that's the first thing we need to do, is go market around Jacksonville, Ocala, Gainesville, we begin the operation and stop in a year or two, because then people know it's the same thing again. There was fuel and now there's not. There was an operation there, now there's not. That's, that's not the story we want to play out there. And we've been willing to invest, as, as you can see over the last four years, we've been, we've been through this for a lengthy amount of time, we've invested a lot into it. So, we, we would not, why would we spend all this time, money, and want to walk away or leave you guys hanging after a few years? If it's any way physically possible for it to break even or make money, we're going to be there. So, and I'll let Merle talk about the typical, typical.
Merlin Seaman from Tarpin Springs. I operate Bell Harbor Marina there in Tarpin Springs, under a similar arrangement with Pinellas County. What, what I have there currently in terms of term is a 15-year initial period that was requested specifically to make sure I had time for return on investment, but then with two five-year automatic extensions. The county there didn't have any problem with that, didn't think it was unusual. To speak to some other clients that I work with, other marinas around the country, I've done a lot of work on Corvignere's Lakes up in Arkansas, where I originally came from. Their leases are all typically 25-year straight-up leases, and I also have clients along Lake Norris in Tennessee that were 25-year leases on two different facilities there. So, the long-term is pretty much the standard of the industry because of the amount of effort and expense and time that you have to put in to get one of these things up and running. I mean, I've, I've got probably close to a million dollars in boats and equipment at the marina now to keep it operating, so I couldn't possibly do that if I didn't have the time to recoup my investment that I'm putting in. And you really want somebody who's going to be there, who's going to provide and secure public access to the waterways around here. So, it's, it's just really not unusual, and, and you want somebody who's in it for the long run. You don't want somebody that's going to try to come in, make a lot of quick money in a couple of years and get out.
So, do you have this exclusivity agreement?
Yes.
And what's the shortest term that you've had a client enter into with a governmental entity?
I think, actually, my 15 is the shortest, 15, five and five. Everything else that I know, I've estimated 25 years straight out.
I thought you said the first year was five and then the two five-year auto renewals.
Mine was 15, five and five.
In your, do you have geographical restrictions on the area in which you're operating in your agreement?
Don't remember if they included that. I don't believe they did, actually. I don't think they anticipated, and I didn't anticipate doing another location.
Okay. Vice Mayor?
I did not think that our deal was to build a marina. What we wanted was to have somebody to operate two water taxis, riverboats, which were water taxis. And we never talked, I've sat here for 34 years, I never talked to Mr. Simbor about doing a marina. We even went to Palmetto back when Tim Smith was mayor and looked at the marina down there, and they said that we, the city was not in a position to, to do a marina here. We're looking for somebody, I thought, to operate Pride of Palatka. We're supposed to have two boats that were out there, and it was supposed to take people down the river. The reason for it was to stimulate what we felt like was for tourism, to get tourism here. I feel like we need to put somebody in business and give them that riverfront for all that time, because some of us will be gone, I don't know about y'all, but I will be gone in 25 years. And when we have other commissions come in, they have other ideas or some other things may come about to do it. The deal for me, and we did a bunch of research, it took us from 1999, when we did an empowerment zone application, and the idea came up. About 10 years to find the money, it took us another about five years to get it. That boat's been sitting out there. We got money for docking, we looked to see where it would go, Murphy Island, Dunn's Creek Park, the people at Palatka saw a good deal for it and asked us to come there. But the primary thing was to get it, to do Palatka and bring people, a destination to come and do it. And I never, and I don't think the commission at that time, because they told me if I could find the money to get it, which I did, find grants, and find somebody to operate it, we did have somebody who had a heart attack and died, that threw us back. I never thought that we would have to do this. And then, when we built the terminal, now they want to take charge of terminal and they want us to put all the stuff in there for snack bars and restaurants. I thought that that might be done if we had it in a different way. They have little kiosks in most of your places that are like terminals. So, I'm, I'm not looking for all this expense for the city. I'm looking for somebody who will operate the boats, is the way to do it. The train people said they would bring people down here for day trips, weekend trips. We got two bed and breakfasts and new hotels in here that if y'all came together, we had one bed and breakfast that the man was doing it, advertising all over Europe with computers and stuff. And I don't see us tying up that riverfront for that length of time and paying that much money. It was not supposed to cost the city anything. It was supposed to be, it's a gift, the boat was a gift for the operator, to operate that boat. And we've gone to the expense of doing all that, we built that building. Mr. Legacy said that the boat that we had, which looked like a paddleboat, wouldn't go fast enough, and asked for it to be changed, and we changed it to a pontoon boat so it would move faster, so it could go to Creston City and Palatka. But the primary thing for that boat was to bring tourism to Palatka first, and as it grew, or as we wanted to let them have it for special occasions on that end, to have it done. And y'all need to know that. It was not to tie up our waterfront. We trying to bring more businesses in here, and we can't let one person pick up all the waterfront. I'm really disappointed when I looked at what all this stuff y'all want us to furnish and pay for. It's, it's not what this, this commission before Mr. Simbor, and, and he did stuff that we didn't know about, that's why we got rid of him. He didn't, he didn't get any of that stuff passed by the, by the commission that was here.
Mayor, can I respond?
Sure.
Ms. Mayor, I appreciate your, your comments, and I take those very seriously. We, if I could back up to a little bit of history, this thing started with the, prior to the RFP that the city issued, I stood here and I complained that the city was getting into the marina business. And the city said, no, we're not. I said, well, if you're putting in docks to your ship store, water taxi terminal, look in the dictionary, that's, that's a marina. And I, I spent a lot of money in taxis next door, wanting the city to get in business. I fought the city. The city decided to put out this RFP in, in defense of my existing business, and in the best interest of the city and in my investment, because I want to see the city prosper. I felt like we were the best and most capable people to run, run the operation of the city request to be run. And that request is for somebody to staff the city terminal building in 63 hours per week. So, that's eight to five, seven days a week. And if you pay somebody $12 an hour in FICA and insurance, nine of the insurance, sure it, pretty quick it'll be $40,000 a year. So, you've got to pay for that now. So, that burden's been put on us. And then, you've got the desire for the city to operate the water taxis, which at some point are going to make money. I think it's a terrific idea. I got, when I got involved with the water taxis and requested, and actually, I did request that the boats were changed. Jonathan and I worked together on it, and when the realization was that the gentleman was that can deliver a boat for number two, he'd take it, you know, basically, it wasn't going to happen, and the boats couldn't make the route that's recommended, which is a lengthy seven-hour trip. I said, get your money back. And response was, we can't, so he can build us a pontoon boat. So, I assisted with specking that out. So, I'll fast forward. We're, we're willing to do whatever you want done, if you guys just want us to operate the boats, if I could operate those out of our, our existing place. I mean, I see your vision, I want to see it happen, but I can't go into that, that building and staff it 63 hours a week just for somebody to clean the bathrooms for the public. And there's got to be a way to make money to pay that person. And, and also, you've got to pay people to, to operate the boats, the captain, the first mate, insurance, and so, we're just trying to create a business plan, but based off of what the city requested, and that was a reply to an RFP, and has specifics of what, what we need to do. So, I just wanted to be clear, this is an RFP, we're trying to accommodate what the city's needs.
So, what would it take for you to operate the boats? Somebody else might want to come in there and, and do the, the terminal, because I thought that's what we were putting it there for, a place for people to go and get their tickets and wait to take, to take the boats out and have restrooms and stuff. Somebody came up and said that you would need that building to help you with the finances, and that, that we needed to look at it, because you wanted to put washers and dryers in there so people could do that when they came into, into town, these boats to your marina.
We have those facilities, certainly not as nice as the city's, but that's all part of what I understand the FDOT grant was, that the ship store is separate, I understand that's part of it, and Jonathan, that takes away his, but part of the water taxi terminal, the other side of the building is, ties into the transit voter grant money for the docks and just accommodate those voters sort of traveling. So, I mean, we're the ones that have to, based on the contract, we're going to have to buy the washers and dryers for the city, for them there, and then we'll eventually make our money back, because there'll be slot, there'll be coin to show, and we'll eventually get our investment back from the washers and dryers. But there's a pretty substantial investment on our side to make all this work, and, and so, I'm, you know, we're, we're open to what the city's needs.
So, what happens if you, if you don't run the terminal building? If we put, had kiosks put in there, people come in there that sell food and little supplies and stuff, and, and we don't have any place that sells souvenirs and that kind of stuff? If we had divided it up and rented it out, it might take care of, it might take care of itself and, and give somebody, somebody to maintain it, so that there would be a place for people to, to get on the boats when they came. I thought that, I thought that was the reason we were building that building, that was my understanding and the understanding they gave us.
Yeah, and Ms. Mayor, we looked at it, the numbers from a lot of perspectives, and I, that's my one and two consultants, they've been involved in this thing for over three years, and they're both expensive, good guys, but they're expensive. And, and so, we've looked at, we've done multiple performances and looked at, the best way to make the water taxis successful is to have a full-time operation where the boats are sitting at the city dock, and there's somebody there full-time to help, to help keep those granted.
But we, when we had to pull it together, how they would operate to keep it from being so bad, they could do it by reservation, and you would not have to run it every day or have people there 20, 12 hours a day or whatever.
And you have, and we don't have to, but the city requested an RFP that we be there eight to five every day, and clean, you know, take at least our share cleaning the public restrooms and pay it overhead and keep the place clean and nameless. So, that's, you know, once you get into that expense, you have to turn it into a full-fledged business to, to accommodate all that.
So, would people, just anybody come up and need to go to the bathroom at the waterfront? Need to go into those bathrooms during the day?
Yes, ma'am, make the fine. That's, that's the numbers, that's the time span that the city has requested. Now, you can adjust that however you want, but that's, we agree to, to meet the city's needs, and that requires somebody there to make the fine every day. And, and actually, the agreement says that we need to have management-level qualified, qualified people either there or on, you know, within reach besides, besides the person, you know, just the, an average employee, you need somebody that's qualified that will make those management decisions.
Any other questions?
I have some, but I want to wait to hear what the rest of you all are going to say.
Well, let's do those.
I want to tell you, we've worked on this thing, we, I started a nonprofit, it was called Pride of Palatka, and people volunteered, and we travel in this state, we got three boats given to us to retrofit, two that were, to be retrofitted, the other one was for parks, and we looked at, at the places where boats were docked, how they did their business and everything. We looked at how they could get business from schools, not only elementary, but high schools, colleges and things. We went to train people, we had a whole, I came and talked you a little bit about it, and told you that we wanted to help you advertise and stuff, never got back, never got together again. It, it, from the way that we had worked at it, it would have been a way to, to get that thing up and running, and people would be coming in and it could have expanded just to get started. But, but the boats been parked down there for, excuse me, docked, they got it back. It's been, it's been docked down there, and you have been taking it out occasionally when it's been here a good while, and you see that there are people who have been using it, Mr. Carr is back there, they, they've used it on several occasions, Regional Planning Council, a bunch of, because I, when I'm in it. And it's able to run and do some things for the city of Palatka.
And we, we do run it when we can. There's, we have some events coming up with Mr. Carr and the park and frolic, and Ms. Mayor, it costs us money every time we run that boat, and we do this part-time.
Hold that thought right there, we're going to take a five-minute recess.
Ben and Rick and Bean, I've got a couple of speakers' cards, and when we last end and we finish with Vice Mayor Brown's comments, I've got a couple of speaker's cards that we're going to go through first. Mr. Carr, you're up.
Well, it's just good to see you all again, and thank you for the opportunity to speak on this. As, as you all have mentioned, I guess, me and the barson group and other groups that have gone out on this boat over the last year or so and all, and it's really something that, that the city needs. Mayor Lawson's vision was right on. How does that happen? That's really up to you guys. But as far as, as I'm concerned, you know, we, last year's frolic, we had four trips planned, we sold 80 tickets on that boat for, for one day. Our most popular cruise was a wine cruise, which filled up, and all of those were $40 apiece. So, there's money to be made at this thing. The ship store and all of that, I don't know how all that came about, but it really makes sense to have it, I mean, it does. I mean, it does. So, so that's, that's something that I, I'm in favor of. And also, you're right, Mayor Lawson, people from outside of Putnam County are going to come ride this boat. It's not going to be folks here that, that spend the kind of money, that operate this, that pay the kind of money they're, they're used to pay. Boat excursion anywhere in Florida's fifty bucks, no matter how long it is. And so money can be made at this thing and people want to come and do this. I've had the garden club, I've had the Autobuy Society, I've had Bartram groups, I've had the Florida Ringways and Trails Council, I've had a whole bunch of people and we had RV club down at, and all coming here to ride this boat. And what we really need to do is get to a situation where we can have regular trips and you'll start filling it up and all. And I think it'll be, it'll be a great way of promoting the city. So whatever you all need to do to make this thing happen, we, I encourage you to think about it and try to make, try to make it happen. It's needed and for all the reasons that I've given. Also, we had a, we had a paddle boat came, came by down, down the river and y'all probably saw some pictures of that on, on Facebook and so forth. And the operator of that asked me, "Do you think that I could get a deal with the city of Palatka to keep my boat at their dock?" Because he wants it to live here and he wants to use it as a tourist attraction, just like, and he also has a pontoon, a forty-person pontoon boat in Appalachia Cola that he operates. But he thinks that he could operate that paddle boat better from here in Palatka. Now, the paddle boat won't be in competition with your boats because he's selling, he can only take twelve passengers at a time on the boat and it's very luxurious accommodations and so forth. It's really, really cool. But he's willing to, to come here because he sees the need for this kind of attraction here in Palatka. Palatka was the riverboat town. It really was, so.
That brings up a point that, if you don't mind me just bringing it up, I know this is a fluid conversation and, and to Mr., to his point, hard point, a point that we maybe not have stressed as much as we could have is that this agreement gives PBM exclusive rights to manage and/or conduct recreational activities within the entire park area. That would include specifically boat rentals, sales or service, including kayak, canoe, paddle boards, pedal boats, fishing boats, deck and pontoon boats, sailboats, houseboats, personal watercraft or other types of boats, watercraft, tour boat operations, training schools, leasing of boats, slips, mooring fields, rental transportation such as bicycles, scooters, golf carts. So Mr. Carr, one of the things that I assume theoretically would not be permissible would be for somebody to bring a paddle boat in or another houseboat for tours unless it was with PBM's agreement because they would have an exclusive on, on that area, which is part of the reason I have this concern about the twenty-one-year grant because I don't know how Pinellas County has worked, worked and how it's set up in terms of the amount of waterfront or recreational area they have available. We don't have much and we'd be taking all that we have and getting it to one operator for twenty-one years. That's my big problem with the twenty-one years. So just to bring to your point.
I understand.
When, I mean, I think we all know the same thing and I think we're all willing to work for the same thing. But for instance, if we sign this agreement tonight, this gentleman comes up with his paddle boat, he wants to moor in his forty-person houseboat and we say, "Sorry, we gave all the rights to do that to PBM. You can't bring any of that stuff to Palatka unless PBM wants to get involved in that." So that's part of what this conversation is about.
True. I understand. And all of the amenities that you were talking about, they are needed in Palatka. They really are. You've got a national recreation trail here and, and you can't rent a kayak in Palatka and you can't rent a jet ski in Palatka. You can't, all that kind of stuff is very much needed. And I understand your point about having that and all, but it's needed. And in my opinion, and for how that makes it work, we need, we need to get it because we're missing out. Right now, we're missing out. Okay?
Thank you, sir. Mr. Langsner.
I'd just like to add to that real quick. So, so what we're bound is whatever's best for the city. Obviously, we've got to generate revenue, but it's part of the request from the city is that we'd be responsible for the entire riverfront park in regards to overseeing and making sure that good behavior is there, not the bad behavior. If there's a boat that's docking in the wrong place, we're expected to go take care of that and explain to those people they can't park there overnight or whatever it is. There's derelict boats, whatever. That all falls under work that we need to perform. So certainly, we would be interested in having, if the city wants a boat like that there, why wouldn't we talk to them? If it adds value or doesn't conflict with what we're doing, we'd be open to that. But we can't, you know, you've got to get the good with the bad. If we're expected to manage the facilities, and that's what this business plan we need that we're supposed to do, then they would, they would need to come to us.
I think, for me, I think this is a, again, everybody wants this to work. How we get there is the problem or the concern that we all have. And for me, even with the email that we got today from the attorney, your attorney, it would be hard for me to even make a decision based on that. And it would take at length conversation and dialogue and probably more research on our hat, on my behalf, just to make a veteran-form decision because a lot of things that you addressed, you know, we have to definitely take into consideration. So it would be my suggestion that we workshop this where this is our main priority, our main focus. So when we come into this meeting that we have nothing else on our mind but to make sure that we make moveage on this particular contract. Because again, the more that we put it off, the longer that we just, you know, go through this motions. This, this is something that we talked about from the beginning of our time as commissioners and here we are, back at it again, and we're still talking about it. So it will be my recommendation that we workshop this particular topic so that we can get moveage and actually have buy-in from our community.
Before we get there, I got another speaker. Ms. Kitchens.
I'm Lady Kitchens, ten twenty-seventh South Coast Street. I had gone through this agreement last night and written up a presentation which I think might be acceptable to Mr. Langsner as well as the city and work for everybody. But as I sat here tonight, the more I heard, the worse it's gotten. I do need to do a couple of comments before I make my little presentation. I might point out that if this property is leased long-term to a for-profit person, then by state statute, the property appraiser has to assess it on the tax roll. So it will be liable for city and county taxes. That has not been addressed in here and that's for that certain amount of money. I figured it out one time several years ago. Ms. Lawson Brown referenced the marina. As I read this, I realized that this is all about a marina, but the riverboat being just a side issue. I was at all the public meetings on the marina hearings that EDSA proposed back around in oh-three, a little bit earlier. Many, many, many public hearings with many, many, many citizens and the majority of citizens adamantly did not want a marina on the riverfront. Okay, that being said, let me go ahead and go into this presentation because I think it might have some, some meaning that everybody can use. The city has been in talks with the Palatka Boat House Marina Scott Legacy since early 2013 after city manager assembled and he first consulted on the riverfront. I won't go into details, you already know them. About a year ago, you voted to keep negotiating with Mr. Langsner because he supposedly had threatened to sue the city for the twenty thousand dollars he had put into drawing up plans. After all this time, I think twenty thousand dollars is a small price to get rid of this problem. Let him sue you, that's why you have Don Holmes, one of the best lawyers in the state authority, the city attorney. Neither party has made any progress on this agreement for the last five years. You have another option beside this agreement. Mr. Langsner has been running your water taxis for the better part of a year and according to the Bartram festival votes, plans to take eight hundred school kids out in September. Now, if what Mr. Carr just said, forty dollars a pop, I think that's thirty-two thousand dollars, but you all have calculators that are useful for you. That's a nice little profit for Mr. Langsner, which is good. So let Mr. Langsner keep running the water taxi. That solves part of the grant, the part of the grant that says the riverboat must be running, that must be in service. Let Mr. Langsner keep running it. And since he's already been using the water taxi, why don't you look at drawing up a new agreement leasing him the water taxi? Is Mr. Holmes in on it? Lease Mr. Langsner the water taxi. You'll still own it. Let him run it at his expense. Let him keep the profits, you keep the insurance on it. Drop the request for the marine fuel station. We don't want a marina at the riverfront, the citizens don't. Mr. Langsner's been fueling that boat somewhere, so let him continue fueling it wherever he has been. And as to the new ticket office marina store, again, we don't want a marina. But what you have been wanting, all of you all have been wanting a place to have special events like weddings and family reunions, you have it right there in that new building. Use it for weddings and other functions, correct the building house for special events, put Mandy Tucker's office in there so that she can refer people to Palatka Boat House Marina so they can buy the tickets. And then let drive the water taxi. That would also satisfy the grant requirement for the water taxi office. The proposed agreement under paragraph one on page ten talks about a separate building to be placed in the area of the main building and reserves fourteen parking spaces. That, that is taking up even more of the waterfront park space that you recently proposed moving the clock tower for because you said you need more space on the riverfront. This agreement takes up even more. This agreement is not in the best interest of the city of Palatka. I don't have time to go over it, but I have thirteen places marked where I have serious concerns as a citizen of Palatka and a former city commissioner. These are my posted notes. And that, that was just a quick run-through at three o'clock in the morning. It's time to cut your pauses and move on. Doing the same thing over and over again and expecting a different result, a different result is the definition of insanity. I'm asking you to end this insanity tonight, I'm rejecting this agreement and end negotiations with Palatka Boat House Marina. Period. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kitchens. Commissioner Boardman, I'll look, you got a comment?
Yeah, I got a comment. I mean, I think, well, if we workshop this, we, we got to talk about renegotiating the contract because there's no way, we inherited this whole.
Wouldn't be renegotiation because you're in negotiations.
Well, well, we would have to vote it down because the way, the way it's currently set up, it's a, a super disadvantage for our city. And again, we, we talking about Tarpon Springs. Tarpon Springs got twenty-three thousand people. The average, median income down there is sixty-five thousand dollars. And, and we just not in that same position, we're not in that same market. The, the structure of this current thing here, buying all of the fuel, whether it's for your, your personal, I mean, your boat that you're going to be renting or whether you're selling, the city has to buy all of, I mean, provide the whole fuel for them. And that's not, that's a disadvantage for the city based on the contract.
We pay for this fuel, we're not asking this.
No, you're saying we needed, we would need to purchase the, the permanent, the permanent, the permanent fuel station.
Yeah, this part of the RFP, the city offered to install the fuel. We actually have given them some fuel and stopped, started to do it again and stopped because the city wants to do the fuel.
It's part of the fuel department.
Right. And again, you got the whole riverfront there, you, you've got access to sell alcohol, you can do boat rentals, you can sell boats, you can sell kayaks, you can rent kayaks. You got everything at your leisure. The city has pretty much opened up, has been a good partner. And we, we'll get a total loss if we went with this agreement and especially for twenty-one years. I couldn't see going with that. I don't care if we have a workshop or not.
I would welcome the opportunity to discuss the details with you because I obviously don't agree. Any other, any other comments?
I just, I agree with Commissioner Campbell that we workshop this and have the opportunity for all of us to take over.
And that's the pledge of the commission. I, I think both sides need to draw back on and look at what the original RFP was. And this thing, as it continues to grow based upon whatever economic factors we put into this space in order to make it, whatever it has to be, you also got to understand that all the extras that come about from the standpoint of you determining feasibility from a financial standpoint, those are all things that are outside of the RFP. If we look at that RFP and we find a way to make it work within the parameters of the RFP, which doesn't create a hardship for either party, then that's where we are. I have significant concerns as it relates to the exclusivity clause. So when we talk about controlling the riverfront area, for me, that's a no-go. And so, you know, if we're going to have a workshop, then in order for me to even come on board with this idea, there has to be some concession outside of, first, the number of years on this contract. I mean, I understand break-even analysis, all the other stuff that goes into play, the fact that you're making that investment, that's fine and dandy, but to give you absolute control of the riverfront area is, for me, is unconscionable. It has to be a situation where there's some give and take, there's the prospects of this thing working. I, I think it can work, but there are a lot of unknown variables that scare me. And whenever we invest into the unknown, we start out with seventy thousand. Seventy thousand can easily become a hundred and twenty-five thousand the first year, depending on where we are from a probability standpoint. But I do think that in good faith, a workshop would be an opportunity for us all, for you to actually be able to have direct dialogue with the commission as opposed to just only with staff, bringing certain things back to, to the body as a whole, so that you may be able to hammer out some things and get to some middle ground. I definitely appreciate the amount of time and effort that's gone into this thing. I know it's been a number of years of sitting around the table and getting to a point where we still haven't really made much ground, other than at least having a, a working document to start from. And so that in itself is, is a major accomplishment when we talk about negotiations. But I think there has to be some give and take in order, in order for this to become a reality. And so that's kind of, that's my basic thoughts. I can kind of go through this entire document, but I won't do it today for sake of time. But I do think that, you know, we can have a workshop to, to kind of discuss the details of the contract and whether there is a common ground as to where we can go and kind of move from there.
And I thought it was a main goal when he said, back in 2014, when I came on the commission, I think we was in here training at the time or learning about the city. And during that session, you made the statement that based on the way the contract was, you had done your pro forma and that you could make money off of this venture. And, you know, hearing that and then we're, we're here now is, it's not in a, it's not in a good way, but I'll go with a workshop.
You know, sir. Sure. I'll keep it short. The biggest difference is the, the potential for revenue now versus then. There was, there was a thirty-five-plus-seat concession operation that was included in the building. There were two water taxis, fuel farm. So the potential to make the money is, is different now, but we've still got a lot of the same expenses. So, and just a reminder that we, we didn't set this guideline, the RFP set the guideline and we responded to it. We're trying to stay as close to the RFP as we can.
But we've both got to agree that you're way outside of where we are from we started. The RFP doesn't look anything like this contract.
But the deliverables from the city are nothing like the RFP was.
But we, we can dance through it, but the, we both, the contract, this has grown from what the RFP is and this is bigger than the RFP. And it's bigger because, I mean, and it's bigger because from a business perspective, you're trying to maximize your profits and you, you're trying to make sure, you're trying to ensure that you're not hitting a losing endeavor. And that's understandable. But we can both agree that this isn't what's in the RFP completely. Some of this, some of this is your business wish list as well.
Some of it would be, but if we could take like the POA, the entire riverfront, that wasn't our idea. There's a specific layout of what the POA is and we were requested, I think Jonathan could attest to this, that what's requested of us is we have to go through and pick up the trash, we have to maintain, we have to walk the parks regularly and we're responsible for everything that goes on there. That's what was requested from us. Now, if that's different, I haven't been told that.
I, I think, I honestly think, I think the best way to do this is to sit down and go through the issues in detail where there is nothing else there but this, where we talk about it and we see if there's a common ground. And to me, it's much better than you standing up here. If we're sitting around a table and we're there for one specific purpose and that's to see if there's common ground, I think that's going to be a lot more beneficial than us sitting here and talking about this stuff today in, in fragments.
Yep. I would make, I would make that motion to, I mean, because of the conversation that we have to have to take place in that workshop. So I'll make a motion that we have a workshop as soon as possible. And I make also the recommendation that we have it at the marina house or whatever it's called. So do what we have to do to get it set up. So do what we have to do to get it set up there.
Can we do it there?
At the ship?
Are we in the middle of...
The ship store?
The ship store.
At the ship store?
Yeah, at the ship store, I'm sorry.
It's nice and...
Then we have the meeting there.
Does it function?
It would be kind of small, we'd have to look at the occupancy of the...
If it's above the third front.
Do you have recording capabilities and all that stuff there?
It's not a level problem, I don't think.
If, well, we have the location, whatever, but I would like to go there and actually put it to use at some point and have a meeting there.
If it's feasible?
Yeah, if it's feasible. If not, we'll have it at the chambers or wherever we deem necessary.
Second.
So motion on the floor, the second, to have a workshop on the ship contract. Vice Mayor Brown's ready to leave, so it's called a question. All the papers say aye. Opposed, motion carries unanimously. And again, I definitely thank you guys for being here, for your patience. Hopefully, you can take steps in the right direction. Item number seven on the agenda is administrative reports. Before we start, the administrative reports. Thank you, Michelle Legas, Senator. Thank you gentlemen for being here as well. Our holiday schedule for the remainder of two thousand and eighteen?
First, before I go into holiday schedule, I just wanted to thank the Honorable Ken Parker for the pens. Those are really nice. If you have a couple of extra, I know some people who would love to have the...
And I like the cell phone holder part.
Yes, I like it.
And we got a special guest with us as well.
We do. Mr. Blank, would you like to introduce?
Mr. Nick?
Nick Blank.
Introduce, introducing. It looks like he's... Come on up, Nick.
And he's reporting at night?
Yeah, that's... Hey, guys. I have recently accepted a job in Clay County, Clay Day. It's my former editor, worked with him like for two or three years when I was in college. It's a good opportunity, I live kind of near there. This is John Shipley, he's taking over for me. Just graduated from UCF.
And is he coming from Clay County?
I was born there, yes, ma'am. Yeah, I'm John Shipley. Like I said, I started last month, working a few days a week while I was still in school. Graduated last week, so I'm not here full-time. I'm gonna be covering the entire city of Palaka, surrounding areas, and I want to make sure to be all these meetings. And if you ever need anything, feel free to reach out.
Yeah, congratulations.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Congratulations on both.
And he can when you quote.
You're coming on board.
I'm excited. I just want to say, thanks so much for you guys. Always wanted to pick up a phone, that kind of thing. I've covered meetings in Palaka, I've covered the school district, you guys, by far are the best. So, yeah, thanks for your time, guys.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you, guys.
When is your last day, Nick?
August twenty-second.
August twenty-second, alright.
I want to tell me I almost voted this right most of the time, thank you.
You did, you did an awesome job.
There's a difference between saying when you said it was the issue.
Yeah, no, I said...
But leaving out fraud, I'm saying...
Alright, it's eight twenty-eight, it's almost seven-thirty in Alabama, so we want to move forward.
Holiday schedules, I put the holiday schedule out there. The only day that was kind of in play was Veterans Day, which falls on a Sunday this year. So I checked with the county, checked with the school board, they're all observing the twelfth, which is Monday. I also contacted Ms. Jerry Feaster, she is the representative of the BFW who organizes Veterans Day parade. And they're still in talks as to what day that parade is going to be. Because last time they held it on a Sunday, they got a lot of non-positive comments about that. So they're looking at either doing it on Sunday or moving it to a different day. Don't know if it's gonna be Saturday or Monday. The rest of the days are pretty much what they are. Monday, September third is Labor Day, Thanksgiving holiday is what it is. Monday and Tuesday is a Christmas holiday, that's Christmas Eve and Christmas Day. And Tuesday, January first is New Year's Day. And the, kind of moving forward into two thousand and nineteen, when we do see the winners of the elections and, of course, Mr. Borum is already in, that's gonna be on Monday, January the seventh. So that is what it is. But I wanted to make everybody aware, just in the spirit of disclosure. And of course, Halloween is Halloween, and that's when the county's also planning on celebrating that day. Special call to meetings, item B. As you know, there has been a purchase of the Campbell Building by Edge High School. When they purchased the building, they decided that they were going to open school on August fourteenth. But there are a couple of issues with the building that precludes them from legally starting school on August the fourteenth. One of them is the zoning. And Mr. Locknick, if you would like to stand up and talk a little bit about what they need to do, we've agreed to work with them to expedite getting their building rezoned, just so that they can get their conditional use to operate a school in it.
Very simply, the downtown business zoning which they have does not provide for schools. By rezoning to the C-one district, they are allowed to do school by conditional use. Also, they're within three hundred feet of the currently, the Magnolia Cafe, which has a license to sell alcohol. And so they would have to do a conditional use for that purpose also. So they're going to the planning commission, on its plan planning board, on a special meeting next week, Friday, the seventeenth. We've set that up. The manager persuaded and called every member up and got them to agree to a Friday meeting, which I thought was amazing. And by having these two meetings with the city commission, we can complete the rezoning and we'll be able to get them operating as expeditiously as I ever thought possible.
Well, wait, you're presuming the outcome of the zoning hearings, and that's not a, that's not a good presumption.
I am not assuming anything, I'm saying it is possible.
I have a question. I met a lady today that bought the Coca-Cola place, and she wanted to put a brewery in there.
She's out there, she's right there.
And she makes, I mean, she's across the street from where that is. Is that gonna impede her from coming in here doing that? Because that's more jobs than the job...
Her application's in place as well. Without discussing the whole meeting tonight, the applications are in place, you will be...
Her application's going for the seventeenth also, it's first on the agenda.
So my purpose is to let you guys know that we will need to call special meetings for August the twenty-third and August the thirtieth. They need to be held after five o'clock PM because these are zoning matters. So we've proposed five fifteen PM meetings for August the twenty-third and August the thirtieth in order to hear these two readings from the rezoning. Even if the planning board does not recommend that we rezone, it still comes forward to the commission for the final. And so if you vote it down on the first meeting, there's no second meeting. But if you pass it on first reading on the first meeting, then we need to go to the thirtieth on a second reading, and then they are. Their zoning issues are pretty much resolved as of the thirtieth. And so with kind of a consensus from the commission, we'll go ahead and get those notices out tomorrow.
I'll entertain a motion.
Second.
I'll entertain a motion.
Oh, I'm sorry. My motion to go ahead and move over at something...
It's a motion on the floor to accept the August twenty-third and August thirtieth dates for special call meetings if necessary. There's a second by Vice Mayor Brown. Any further discussion?
Question.
All the papers say aye. Opposed, motion carries unanimously. Moving on. Office equipment and cell service provided.
We have made a lot of progress here these last two and a half, three weeks. We've, I just have to give all the credit to the staff. They had done all of this research months ago. It was just kind of held up, and so we broke the dam loose. We have gone ahead with awarding a new contract on copier equipment and other office machines that we use quite frequently here. Also, the cell phone service. And would you like to come up and give them the reason why we had to change the cell phone service? Or why we need to change the cell phone service?
Our reasoning for changing the cell phone services was, for our new system, SmartCon, our current provider Sprint wasn't allowing us to be able to use our systems in our vehicles. Basically rendering our officers incapable of doing reports in the field and actually being able to look at the information that helped with public safety or officer safety while out in the field. So by changing to Verizon, it allows us to be able to receive that information and do those reports. I am able to report that we received the hotspots of the devices today. They are working, I'm getting reports back that everything's working fine, we have no problems. Prior to today, we were down, excuse me, a third of our fleet was not able to do reports in the field.
You're down like thirteen spots, right?
We were down seventeen.
And the fire department was down too, out of four. So it's a good move, good move, good change. I also wanted to talk a little bit about the rental facilities. Thank you, Commissioner Campbell, for getting that moving. We are looking at all of those rental facilities, criminal facility fees, the rental facility rules, and we'll be bringing that to you at a later date. And there is a need to take a look at those rates because we are far below, far below anyone around us. And so, you know, it's something that we've needed to look at for a long time.
While we're talking about rental facilities, I want to go ahead and thank in advance both Mr. Griffith and Ms. Tucker. For the first time in a very long time, we've had a couple weddings scheduled for the Bronson Hullen House. I know there's also been a grant award that we discussed earlier. And there's an opportunity for us to do some much-needed repairs prior to those events so that we can showcase this facility and it become a welcome place for many more events of the same caliber in the future. And I know that they are both working diligently to make that happen in a very short period of time.
What kind of thing rentals in lease? Just going back to this particular thing on your Xerox or whatever, those things are running like six hundred and something dollars a month. And does that include per impression cost and copy? Do they have additional costs over and above that base rental?
Yeah, so the equipment purchases have a base cost, a fixed cost, and then it's a per-click charge that we, it's based on your average clicks. And all of the printers and machines actually track that sort of thing. We also have, in this contract, there's a fifteen dollar a month service charge, if you will. It covers, and there's an IT support that we're able to contact at any point in time. They give even more than the copier. And then there is also, it covers any, it automatically will tell you whenever you're low on toner. And so it will automatically send it out to you. And instead of charging shipping rates, which is what a lot of the other competitors said that they did, they charged you as they shipped it. They didn't charge you for the toner, it was already bundled into that cost, but they charged shipping. This particular company only charged you a flat rate a month. So you got your service and your, I say your service, your basic service comes along with it, but this is above and beyond.
Yeah, I understand that very well, and I've dealt with that, and I've managed those type contracts before. Because as I was working at George Pacific, I was over their contract leases and agreements. And, you know, we dealt with Rico, we dealt with Xerox, we dealt with HP, we had multiple vendors. And the six-twenty-seven, I think, is really high in addition to the per-click charges. The technology is still there with Rico and some of the other ones as it relates to automatic sending of those things. And it would be like, like two hundred or so dollars per month for the lease. And about, you know, I can get to the details, but I think that's a little bit high.
I can't speak to the six hundred dollars because I don't have it with me right now. However, there were, we had six proposals from a variety of vendors.
No Rico.
Rico, yes.
Rico?
We did. Canon, multiple Canon, and there were two Canon, one Rico, one... Anyways, we had six of them.
Okay.
And they were all very competitive, within the same... So then we went above and beyond to ask about service and the different promotions that they had for us. Yes, sir, but I'm happy to share with you any of that additional information.
Yeah, I like that.
So I do have information above and beyond what you have.
Because I know some reps with Rico, I know some with HP, so I'll follow up with...
Can you get with Commissioner Borum and just kind of address it?
I'd like to follow back, maybe follow back up with him. He's got a contract already signed. Yeah, well, we're kind of talking about a new project.
Alright, well, going forward, going forward, think about it.
Give him some of the information so that...
We will sit down and meet with you tomorrow and give you the information over and above what you have there.
Anything else, Mr. Griffith?
Yes. You all may remember Mr. Zenny Best. He has been before this commission many times. He wants to get his clubhouse clubhouse off the ground. We were working with him toward that end. Mr. Alex Sharp, with an E on the end, who is a local therapist, was kind of at the helm of that. And we were negotiating with him on opening his clubhouse in a building that the city owns. And then Mr. Sharp passed away very suddenly. And so it brought Mr. Zenny Best's crusade to bring this to Putnam County kind of to a grinding halt temporarily. And so I know that you all haven't seen Mr. Best in this room, but I've seen him maybe three times a week in my, oh, haven't we? In my office, and he is, and, right, he's been at the county. And we, today, we actually met with the Public Safety Task Force Committee that meets with the county. All of the public safety, I believe that Chief Shaw is on that committee also. And so we took all the research that we had done on Clubhouse International, which is the clubhouses that he's been referring to. We took all of our research on that. He's been in contact with the gentleman who helps people set these clubhouses up. We have located who we think is willing to take a director's position to take over from Mr. Sharp. But we, he needs some funding. And so the mayor and I and Mr. Best went to that meeting today, and it was well-received, very well-received. And I'm surprised he's not here celebrating tonight because they are actually gonna take his ball and start moving it forward. They're looking at moving that forward, and so we're really happy for him.
So we're gonna look at, from that meeting, there were some next steps to look at possible funding opportunities, to also look at, to actually set up a tour of the clubhouse over in Gainesville, and also to figure out, get some additional parameters as we start to move forward and come back with proposals, possibly even at local, if there's an opportunity for that. And so, you know, Betsy kind of, Mr. Griffith took the lead on that, and she moved that forward, and we had a really great meeting, and so we're looking forward to it. Chief Grounds was in there as well. And so that puts us where we were. Were you in that meeting? No, he wasn't.
Supposed to be, I think.
So...
Chief Shaw was supposed to be.
So it puts us where we need to be, and so we're gonna move forward with that. My bad.
It was a very large fall, just...
And so, it was your twin.
Yeah.
So we, and so it puts us where we need to be. But we'll bring more information back as things start to unravel to see what the pleasure of the commission is.
And my last item is I just really want to thank the staff for doing what they do. They're all professionals, they know what they're doing. It's been a packed two and a half weeks. We've had a lot of meetings, we've made a lot of progress, and I hope to continue the forward motion. So I just want to thank all of you guys for shining and doing what it is that you all do so well. Thank you.
Same. We definitely appreciate you and the effort and the leadership that you put forth during, again, another period of transition. And it's been good because we see smiling faces and we've gotten a lot of things done. And so we definitely want to thank you for stepping up to the plate and filling in the void. And you're doing a great job, and I agree with Ms. Kitchener's earlier statement. Let's see where things go. We got time, so we've been looking around the country for what may be right in front of us, but let's see what's there. And that's just, we'll take some time, just get through the budget season and go from there. The chief?
There's two chiefs.
Two chiefs. You should, you said like, yeah, like a thirty-minute speech.
Would you like to come up here and read John Yule's report on the airplane crash?
Did we get the level?
Well, he sent me an email... Well, he sent me an email. He wanted me to make the report, but I'd really like for Chief Grimes to read it.
Yeah, he was out there, and I'm telling him.
He's out there, but he, yes, you were.
Commissioner Campbell, request. Can you read it fast?
Yeah.
At tonight's CC meeting, we apologize for his absence and passing sincere praise and appreciation for the outstanding response by our first responders to the recent airplane crash at the airport. The police and fire department response was exactly what we, one would hope for in such a crisis. Quick, large, deliberate, and textbook professionalism and appropriate objectives and described what witnessed throughout the entire event. Chief Grimes and Chief Shaw should be very proud of the efforts put forth by their respective teams that evening. Chief Grimes' personnel involvement was invaluable leadership during what I consider one of the most taxing times of response. Well done. Additionally, I'm impressed by seeing the commission, city staff, and heard about the emergency call, including Mayor Hill himself at scene. It has demonstrated their support for our first responders, is constantly, and perform the duties in the situation. They're truly placid, fine. I'm not sure that, it was edited in the Jacksonville News Report, but I state during the numerous interviews that there is no finer first responders anywhere. I would be amazed. This is what I remember most about the tragic event at our airport that evening, that spending the time with the female victim's father, who came back by the airport since the incident to express appreciation for the care and support that was given in the face of tragedy loss from him and his many friends and family, members of the victims. One more important point, there is at no point the quality of fuel of this matter and liability of the city's part questioned by the FAA or National Transportation Safety Board. Yes, our fuel was quarantined by the fuel provider for a short time. However, the standard protocol that the airport provides, the last load of fuel to the aircraft be involved in a fatal accident. Thank you for passing this on, if you will, again, Ms. Best.
Thank you, John.
I want you to know.
Thank you. So let's get around to our first.
Awesome job. Got ISO 2.
So while I'm here, I just want to mention that our fire trucks have been ordered. One will be here in the next few weeks.
Woo, all right.
We'll get you for a ride with you, Campbell.
I'll ride too, pal.
You're just gonna ride him?
He asked me to be the first.
He did ask. He did.
Well, I want the other, the other truck.
Thank you. Thanks, Robson. Anything?
I'm driving.
Mr. Lockneck.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Griffith.
Nothing, sir.
Becker.
I do have one thing. I need direction. I want to first thank you all for a wonderful budget workshop. Thank you for making me feel so comfortable. It went very well, I think. However, I need direction from you all. Are you looking at, towards the end of the meeting, you did say that you would like to have another workshop. I sent up some follow-up emails after both the CRA and the regular workshop, and with the notes that I had. Are you looking to have a formal workshop again? Do you want to have a quick 30-minute session before our September, our first September reading of the budget, just to make sure we have everything? Are you wanting to have some one-on-ones so that we can discuss where we're at? I just need some feedback and direction from you all. I'm happy to do whatever.
It looks like we're here in August anyway, at the end of August anyway.
Are we here in August?
For the special call meetings.
And maybe once, because we don't know how it's gonna go.
Maybe once.
Term is the second.
So, I mean, and again, of the follow-up emails, there were changes really to the numbers. You had a couple of items that you discussed, and we can have discussion on. I don't believe that we need a long workshop. That is my opinion.
Can we schedule a quick budget workshop on the 30th and let that be the second one?
Okay, we do the 30 minutes before.
No, because sometimes we're getting those meetings, and we have, they never go as planned.
Okay. You schedule it for 4 o'clock, you've got your other meeting starting at 5:15. So go to.
I think that.
Speaking now, verbal, please.
I motion to.
And what are you looking for in this workshop?
The budget.
Do you want me to just present the same thing that we've conquered just to have a.
Whatever changes, and the concerns that were addressed in the first meeting, in the first workshop.
He said adjustments and concerns.
Yeah.
Those were the CRA.
That was CRA, which will be addressed at August 13.
13.
Yes. So but as far as the regular one, there were no dollar monetaries.
All right, let's do this. Have your one-on-ones. If there's nothing extra, we move forward.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Okay. Ms. Tucker.
No.
Acting clerk. Mr. Holmes.
No.
Ms. Trigger, is anything else?
No, sir.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Brown.
I have one thing.
Give me one.
I have been after Mr. Larry, oh goodness, he's our historian. Beaton, to help me find a picture of the French Bootery. French Bootery was owned by Senator Nelson, some of his relatives. And the way he remembers our city is, every time I go to Washington or we meet with him, he says, "My relatives owned the shoe store in Palatka," and I can't remember the name. And I say, "French Bootery," and he's right on it. And I think that it puts something in his head that he remembers us a little better. He doesn't have any of our pictures in his office, and I, Mr. Beaton found the picture of the old French Bootery, and I'd like to have it blown up one maybe at eight by 10 to go in his Jacksonville office, and a little bigger one to be presented to him to go in his Washington office. So he keeps us omnipresent, so when we get ready to go see him, or he needs to see us, we'll be on his mind. So if y'all will give Betsy the nod.
Maybe the queen of that.
And I'm glad to be back with y'all. I went to my doctor, and I can ride them.
Oh, man.
Before y'all see the.
They give me such a hard time.
Can you let Captain?
They took you. Said what?
Say, y'all better put on the best.
And y'all love me. I hate men.
Commissioner Borum.
Yes, before you take off and go up there to Senator Nelson's office, make sure that he continues to work on that waiver that he was supposed to be working on with Martha Ruby and the rest of you.
We don't get the picture till we get the waiver.
Okay, but long story short, here we go. I want to commend and congratulate Chief Grimes on his promotion to fire chief. His well-deserved promotion, and not to prolong everything, I'll keep it moving. Also like to commend and thank Betsy for accepting the role for, you know, city manager. I'd like to see that move a little bit faster. I think we need to get this done well before the end of the budget year. Like to get her moved in prominently. That's my position. We had our first Young Life fundraiser on the 7th of this month at Zaxby's. It went well, and after I left from over there, I went over and did the national night out, stopped in there, so staying pretty busy with activities in the community. They have another event coming up this Saturday. It'll be held over at the Ark, the Putnam Aquatic Center. They're gonna have a back-to-school bash for all the adolescents who want to come out. But Young Life is an organization that reach out and touch over 2 million kids a year, and it's in line with what North Point Youth, as well as Police Athletic League does, or what have you. They're all a part of Ninety Countries, and they, we were the doughnut hole in this whole thing. We got Clay, St. John's, Duval, all of those had Young Life organizations. So Putnam, we just got that lifted on this past few weeks. So going forward, that's all I have.
Question, you said that's, is that Saturday from 4:30 to 7:30?
4:30, 7:30.
And that's at the Putnam Aquatic?
Yeah.
And that was the.
Well, Putnam County is doing that whole, because you got it in St. John's County, you got it in Clay, so. He trying to be smart. Hey, hey, Betsy, hit him in the short rear, please.
Commissioner, where?
I don't want to be long, but I can tell you I had the opportunity while I was off on summer break to come down to the city hall and do lots of visiting and build on relationships. And I can tell you, we had to make, there was a tough decision that had to be made. Sometimes you have to put on the brakes in order to move forward. However, coming in tonight, because I started work on Tuesday and hadn't had the opportunity to come in and visit, but the atmosphere was totally different. Everyone, just, it was just pleasant walking in, and I tell you, I'm happy about that. You guys are doing a great job. Betsy, I am so excited and happy for you. Chief Grimes, I'm happy for you, and that's it. We can move forward.
That's your report?
That's my report. You want more?
You got something else?
Just trying to tell you.
That's more than what I usually say.
Commissioner Campbell.
I'll take her time, don't worry. I just have a question for Mr. Parker. The presentation that you have, is it available on your website so that we can refer citizens, or you can't do anything like that?
We can.
Just so, because a lot of things that you was on the presentation, I think, would be beneficial to our citizens as a whole, and if we have it to where it's at a place that we can send them, I think that'll save a lot of time. Or if we can put it on our web, give it to us, and we put it on our website so that we can refer people to our website, that'd be great. Also.
And a label was put in it, televised.
Oh, we can put them to YouTube. Perfect, though. See, that's why I like them. Also, I'm excited about what I'm seeing around City Hall as well. I pop up all the time. I'm grateful for what we're seeing, the atmosphere. Congratulations to Chief. I always, even though I sit on the panel board, I always brag about the fire department and how every time I call, every time the community call, they're there, you know, for everything. So we're grateful. Thanks for that. And to the commission for allowing me to do the internship, I'm grateful that, I mean, that's like my heart, my baby, and that's it. Oh, students coming back in, please pray for our, you know, our students as they return back to classes, our educators as we return back to classes. I didn't get the summer break, but again, much prayer for this upcoming year, Palatka. Our education is moving forward, and we want to, we want to move, and we continue to move. So continue to keep us in your prayers as we go forward in this educational year. Thank you.
Great job with National Night Out. It was a great, it was a great response from the community. I see the event growing on an annual basis. We had community tables out, different organizations out. I think it was really, it was a great event. Outside of that, just recently, we received an award from the Florida League of Mayors, Catalyst Grant for our race issue study circles. That catalyst grant is one of only five given out from to 413.
Give it by hand.
But the real work goes to the citizens of this community, particularly gay, gay percent and hurt group, and the work that's been done to really start to have those very difficult conversations and make it become a part of our culture. And we've seen the circles expand from Interlock into Creston City. Outside of that, we are headed to Hollywood, Florida for the Florida League of Cities Conference. I'm very excited about it. This group of commissioners all serve on various boards with the Florida League of Cities and also with Florida Blackhawks and locally elected officials, and we will do everything we can to continually represent Palatka on the state level so that we can move the community forward and restore the gem to its shining glory. We are adjourned.